Well, we certainly appreciate your efforts on the Queen Street Cruising. We look forward to it this year, so we'll certainly all be there.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, before you move on, Mr. Brown, I see that you're at the microphone here. Could you just clarify for me what you're looking to speak to?
I'm looking to speak to having City Council redo the 2017 budget so as to implement a 3.43 levy increase and no cuts.
Okay, Mr. Brown, did you request from a general view the opportunity to speak at this meeting?
No.
Okay, so because you didn't make a request from a general view to speak at this meeting, you'll have to raise the issue in accord with the rules at the end of the meeting as additional business.
Okay, so you're saying that you want me to wait till the end of the meeting?
As painful as that might be, Mr. Brown, that's what I'm suggesting to you, yes. So at the end of the meeting, you'll have to ask Council for the opportunity to add this to the agenda under, I think it might be ruled, you know the rules, I think, just as well as I do, I think it might be ruled 24.9 or...
Yes, 24.9.
24.9. So if you're looking to speak to Council, you'd have to do so under 24.9. If Council permits you the opportunity to speak to them, then they would at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Madam Clerk?
Okay, before consent, we were going to move to Agenda Items 7.8. 7.8.1 Economic Diversification Fund application from CreoTech. The motion is by Councilors Campodice and Christian, resolved at the report of the C E O Economic Development Corporation dated December 9, 2016 concerning E D F request CreoTech Innovative Cloud Excellence Center project services 365 be received and the recommendation to provide $200,000, 2017 $100,000, 2018 $100,000, and funding from the Economic Diversification Fund be approved, conditional on the required total additional funding being received and the total amount stated in the application from a combination of other levels of government and private sector sources, and further that the E D F funds be reallocated from the remaining funds from two previously approved projects, that is, the Gateway Project 2003, $105,125, and Waterfront Walkway 2006, $123,000.
Okay, I think Mr. Vare is speaking to this matter. Is that correct, Mr. Vare?
Yes, through you, Mayor Provinzando, to City Council. In my previous role at the Innovation Center, was pleased to get a call from Mario Chabot from the CreoTech Group. And Mario was involved in setting up the original Community Geomatic Center in the G I S system back in 1999. In his new role at the CreoTech Group, he identified a very promising project that we're pleased to be a part of, and I worked with Jerry Baguera at the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center since that time to help bring the project to fruition and with the CreoTech Group to launch this project. The information is in your package. Essentially, it is a new advanced service center. I think it's important to note, it's not a call center. These are high-end jobs that will be employed in this center, working around Microsoft's new Dynamics 365 solution for small to medium-sized businesses. And so there'll be a range of different career types at the center, including business, I T, and sales and marketing positions that'll be working off this new platform in Sault Ste. Marie, serving a North American clientele.
Okay. Do we have questions for Mr. Vare? Counsel Fatah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Can you tell us, if you know the fact that he's originally from Sault Ste. Marie, how much of a part that played in choosing Sault Ste. Marie?
Right. He is not from Sault Ste. Marie, but he had the experience of working here over a number of years when he was first forming the G I S group and lived in the community during that timeframe. So he's familiar with Sault Ste. Marie.
Okay, that's good. Obviously, the fact that he had a connection played a probably pretty important role, I would think. Could I just ask, Mr. Mayor, could I just ask Shelley if she can just comment on the funding and how that's going to work into it? I mean, we've allotted about $750,000 already from the E D F, so just give us an idea of where that money's coming from?
I think the motion speaks pretty clearly that there was money that was allocated in 2003 and 2006 that has gone unspent. The projects who was allocated to are identified, and we're going to be removing those allocations and investing them in this project if Council sees fit.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Those are long, those are dated allocations, too, 2003 and 2006. Do you have anything to add to that? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Dodds? We have a comment from Counsel Christian. Mr. Vare, sorry, I apologize.
Well, I just want to say that this is really good news. I mean, it's obvious it's very good news. And I liken the report that pointed out that Sault Ste. Marie is a relatively inexpensive place to do business, which bodes well for us. And I think it's important to point that out. We have outside eyes saying that, you know, it's worthwhile doing business here. It's relatively inexpensive to other locations, and I think, you know, we need to keep that in mind. That's a positive message. We've been dealing with a lot of negative stuff lately. This is a very positive message. Thank you.
Yeah, it seems to me that Council doesn't have any more questions. I just, I think, speak on behalf of all Council to thank you for your work on this and your previous role, Smick, Mr. Vare, and it seems like Council's ready to vote on the matters. It's a very good news story, and I'm sure it will get lots of support. All in favor? Carried.
Okay, Agenda Item 7.8.2 Economic Diversification Fund renewal for Searchmont. A motion by Councilors Romano and Christian, resolved at the report of the C E O Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation dated December 12 concerning Searchmont Ski Association Inc. Financial Guarantee be received and the recommendation that the $100,000 previously transferred by the City of Sault Ste. Marie from the Economic Diversification Fund to the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation to be set aside as collateral for the R B C S S A I line of credit be renewed for the period of January 1, 2017 to the earlier of May 1, 2018, or until such time as the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation has divested itself of the asset, at which time the funds will be returned to the Economic Diversification Fund.
Wow. Did Council get that? Okay, so we'll let you ask questions, then. So we have Mr. Dodds from the E D C. Mr. Dodds, are you answering questions on this?
Yes, I am. As we had a discussion with the Treasurer Shelley Shell and the City Solicitor Nula concerning the process, but insofar as we are the ones that have the money in the account for the guarantee, it was appropriate for us to apply. We received a letter from the folks at the ski association requesting...
Maybe we can just draw some attention to that. I think we have some young skiers in the audience. Do we have some young skiers in the audience? Maybe you can stand up and wave, and all the folks at home can get a shot of you. There we go. Okay, so Council, any questions for either city staff or Mr. Dodds?
Mr. Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe to Shelley Shell. So Shelley, this is an ongoing process that we do. That's my first question. Is it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Turco. It's not ongoing. We have had this application before and have renewed it. It's up for expiry. The ownership has changed for the hill, so it's under a little bit different terms and requirements. And it is up for sale, so we have only extended this one until the end of the next ski year, which was 2018.
2018.
May 2018.
And their end of their fiscal year.
And one follow-up question to that as well, Shelley. But in my tenure, and I'm sure some other councilors here, we have always supported financially and other ways as well. I know we have a different arrangement right now with Searchmont. Maybe, Mr. Dodds, you can answer that as well. But we've always supported. So maybe it's a different type of arrangement, but we've always come forth with money.
I think there's, Mayor to Counselor Turco, we have, there has been since, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Shelley, but I believe it's since 2007, we've had a loan guarant, there's been a line of credit that the city has backstopped since then. And the last time this came forward, the suggestion was made, and I think it was because this is located outside of the city bounds, that the responsibility for the guaranteed for the line of credit moved from the city to the Economic Development Corporation. So the E D F, that we were provided $100,000 in the E D F, which we put in an account, essentially acts as collateral for the line of credit. In this time of year, that line of credit's drawn well down, as they are just about to start to seize. But that's the extent right now of the monies that are being contributed from the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Fatah?
Just to follow up on that comment by Shelley, that the property is for sale. Can you give us an idea of how it's being advertised, and is there any indication that there's some interest right now, or that you've seen?
Well, we, yeah, we did essentially what I would call a prospectus. We retained B D O and we put together our prospectus. We sent that out to a number of parties that we knew had an interest in, and we've heard responses back from one that has experience in doing, you know, operating ski facilities and owning ski facilities. But what we're doing is, and we also had, as part of our original agreement, some interest expressed on a first right of refusal. We do not think that's going to follow through. And similar, so what we're doing now is we're taking that prospectus, and we're doing a much more robust effort on getting this out into a broader market for and see what kind of interest there is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, you know, I certainly, sure, I'm quite sure that you're going to be quite diligent in making sure that we don't get the same situation that happened a couple of years ago, when the buyer from Chicago bought it and then kept the city hostage for a couple of years. But you would probably, when you say being diligent, you probably would be looking for a company of sorts that's in the business, perhaps?
Well, I think there's a few things that are kind of conditions that we want to have. Number one is that we recognize that, in our minds, this is a community asset, so we want to be able to ensure that we can continue to do what has been done historically as a great family facility for recreation. It's also a tourism attraction that brings people in from many parts of the U.S. and Canada. And we also are looking for someone who has the capacity to grow that facility going forward. And so that's really the objectives that we have, and we're looking for ideas and so forth. So it's an interesting property. It has lots of other aspects that really haven't been fully capitalized on. So what we're doing right now is to get it in as best shape as we can. We're hoping for a good year. So far, so good in terms of weather. I had, I just spoke with the general manager who's somewhere, there he is, and he's making snow. And he hopes, I think he originally was hoping a little bit earlier, but it looks like it's going to be Christmas Eve when they're slotting to open it up. So, you know, this is all, this is the time, assuming we have good weather, unlike last year, this is the best circumstances for selling a resort we can.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Anybody else, Council? See no additional questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you, Mr. Dodds.
Yes, and before I go, I just want to let know, because Mario Bro is in Montreal. He wasn't able to be here for the CreoTech proposal. We had a great conversation with him. He's watching us right now, so I'm sure that he'll be delighted to know that you looked upon it quite favorably. Thanks.
Okay, Madam Clerk, 6.6 off 2. Yeah, because I'm conflicted on that. So on the consent agenda, Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First one is 6.7, the cultural policy revisions.
Go ahead.
And Virginia, would you mind telling me, how long have we had the cultural endowment fund? And maybe this is where Michelle will come in, what is the current balance in that fund?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers. The fund was established with seed money approved one time only from Council in the 2008 budget. It was started with $10,000. There hasn't really been much added to it. There might be a small amount. I can't quote exactly what the balance is, but it is well under $15,000, probably.
Okay, thank you. If I could, Mr. Mayor, bottom line is that when we read through the document, really, it seems to be housekeeping changes, more than anything else, updating the wording. But there were a couple of key wording changes, such as one that said 1% would be going into building and renovations, that's moving from concept to statement of action. And what it said, it sounded like it was a concept before, and now it's more definitive that there will be definitely 1% of a building or renovation project that does go into the fund. Am I reading that correctly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers. The Cultural Advisory Board was hoping to change the wording from "except as a concept" to the dedication of "up to 1%." So moving it from that idea where it stood for a while to the dedication of "up to 1%."
Yeah. So I think that's an important note for Council to be aware of, that what we're asking is, I believe, 1% on city municipal buildings where we're doing renovations or building, that we're putting 1% into this cultural endowment fund.
Up to.
Up to, yes. Whereas before, it was a concept, but we didn't really do it. So I think if we approve this tonight, we're going to actually do that, which is very helpful.
Well, I'm still not clear on how we determine which part of the 1% we contribute, because it's up to, so that seems to me to be discretionary. It could be a tenth of a percent, a half of a percent, three quarters of a percent. I'm not, but yes, it would be theoretically, it seems to me, the fundamental change in this is that we are going to...
Start to do something.
Something in, up to 1%.
Well, and my last point is that what I'm seeing is that really we have an emphasis on these solutions and awareness and force. And until such times as we're ever in a position to hire another pile officer, I think we're quite aware that we cannot enforce anything. So we're, staff looked at it thoroughly. We don't want to go the route of a punitive anyway. We've had, we believe, great success working with the community partners around the table. So we've parked that option for now. You'll see that. It's not recommended any longer in this report that's before you tonight. So our next steps are to continue to work as the Roundtable Community Group. Communications and learning and educating ourselves on this issue has been very, very good. So there's been a lot of good successes in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else in 6.10? Counsel Rutland?
Yes, very briefly, Counsel Myers has done yeoman's service on this committee, but also we have to acknowledge the police services have been very diligent and worked with the committee and have had some success in locating some taggers, I suppose, and bringing the whole concept of graffiti to the attention of the general public. Are we at the end of the road? No, far from it, but... of the road? No, far from it. But we will continue to move on as best we can with the help of many partners in this exercise. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is that it for your, Madam?
One more.
One more, Counselor?
Six-
Go ahead.
Six point 18, traffic bylaw annual review, six point 18. And I guess this question will be directed to our Deputy CEO of Engineering and Public Works. And I'm not sure, Larry, in fairness to you, it's Susan Hamilton Beach and Andy Sternansky that I've been communicating with on this. But contained within this one, it's removing the stop sign at Pym and Church, which faces Westerly. And I think in the wording here, it also says removing yield sign, but there is no yield sign. What we're trying to do, I think, here is that we're removing the stop sign and replacing it with a yield sign. But that's not what the wording is in the report. So I think that's just something that has to be changed in the report.
Yep. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. You're correct. It's to remove the stop sign and put the yield sign in.
Yep. I think that just needs to be amended in the report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else on six point 18? Seeing none, Counselor Hollingsworth?
I was going to comment on six point 10, but-
Oh, sorry.
It was moved forward, so I guess my comments are dead.
No, you can comment on six point 10.
We'll be dealing with it separately. Okay. Well, going back to the graffiti, which was already talked about. I just wanted to comment to say congratulations to a young person, Kyle Jouet, who has taken the initiative to do the graffiti in the Gore Street alleyway. And I think that's positive, that this young person has been trying to change the surface of this alleyway. But I'll just, nothing else to say.
Do you have any matters from the consent agenda, seeing as we're on you? Nope. Any other counselors have matters in the consent agenda? Counselor Fata.
Six point 13. I'd just like to get a kind of a, sort of a breakdown of how the value was arrived at and just generally, like what led up to the final value that we paid for the property. I know that we normally go through an appraisal. I just, I just wanted to hear as to how the value that we are paying for that extension was arrived at.
So I'll direct this to the city solicitor. Would you be the most appropriate person to answer this question?
I think so. Just trying to, oh, thank you. This was, as much as is set out in Melanie's report, that it was basically an appraisal that changed the values and then negotiation that led to the, to the final amount that was agreed upon.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it seems, it seems like the city, when it comes to buying property, we seem to pay the max. We seem to, but yet when we sell property, we seem to get, we seem to get, or I should say, when we, when we buy property, as we did on Gore Street, we're paying escalating values. And when we, and then the opposite holds true, is when we, when we purchase property. And the reason I bring this up, and I know it's a little bit of an extension here, but anyway, the reason I bring it up is because this, this location is adjacent to the, a portion of the hub trail. There's three sections of the hub trail that this city had to purchase in order to build the hub trail. And one is right adjacent to the third line extension. And we paid $54,000 for an unbuildable lot. Now, if anybody that knows anything about appraisals, and most of us know about appraisals, I don't think that you would pay $54,000 for an unbuildable lot.
Counselor Fata, you got to keep your comments of something in today's day and age, though. I don't want to hear about something that-
I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor, that it just seems that when we purchase property, we pay the max when we, and when we sell, we get the least. And it just seems to be a common, a common theme here.
Okay. Is that the extent of your comments, Counselor Fata?
No, I was going to make reference to two more locations.
In your comments?
And this one here, I'll make, I'll make reference to one more location, which was a very sad example of where good corporate citizenship didn't come through as I think it should. When a hub trail, I think, enhances a property that it goes next to, we got, we spent $273,000 for that portion of the hub trail on Great Northern, just east of Great Northern Road on Third Line, for a strip of land, which probably either should have been donated to the city, or probably at the very most, being sold for a nominal fee. The city paid $273,000 for a strip of land. And I'm just saying that that is very sad, Mr. Mayor, that, that there couldn't have been, you know, some kind of response from the, from the corporate community that owns this, owned this property.
I, Counselor Fata, I mean, we, we can't be suggesting to private citizens that, you know, I mean, someone owns a piece of property, they could sell it for what they want to sell it for. And if they want to sell it for a certain price, if you need to buy it or want to buy it, you have to buy it for that price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, anybody else for the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll pass the consent agenda, then we'll move on to six point two, which is Counselor Hollingsworth's, Hollingsworth's motion?
A motion by Counselors Hollingsworth and Myers, whereas Sault Ste. Marie is experiencing creative investment and development thanks to individuals, private companies, educational institutions, and community groups despite current economic challenges. And whereas a positive image is critical when it-
Sorry, this is, we have to pass the consent agenda.
Oh, did you not put it in?
No, we didn't. So all in favor of the consent agenda?
That's accepted, six point two and six point six.
Okay. So now we're through the consent agenda, so now we're on Counselor Hollingsworth's motion. Thank you.
Whereas Sault Ste. Marie is experiencing creative investment and development thanks to individuals, private companies, educational institutions, and community groups despite current economic challenges. And whereas a positive image is critical when it comes to community development and revitalization. And whereas the cultivation of positive relationships in the community begins by focusing on the good in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that city council set aside a few minutes at the beginning of each council meeting for counselors to share positive community stories.
Okay. Would you like to speak to this, counselor?
Basically, this is a practice that I believe, from my understanding, has been done previously in other years and during council. And so this is really not that new. But at one point, it was abandoned. I just think that there's still a lot of good positives happening in this community. We've already heard some tonight. And setting aside a few minutes to allow sharing of economic positive stories or just community building stories would just reinforce the pride that this city has and shares. And yes, it's not to basically ignore our economic challenges that we're dealing with. We are dealing with them. But we also need to celebrate our success stories. And basically, I hope I have support on this.
Counselor Butland?
Yes, very hardy support. And I'll maybe move it forward more quickly and say, I talked to Jorge Mitra of Teneris a few days ago, and he opened Teneris 16 years ago. He's back. He's very, very happy. He said the welcome he received from Sault Ste. Marie is tremendous. It's a good news story, but the real good, good story, news story is that they've hired 200-plus people back to work and are somewhat optimistic about the future. That's a good news story, I would like to think. And, and SR, they're working with a full complement of people, so particularly at Christmas time. Now, to the specifics, Counselor Hollingsworth, she spoke to me a couple of months ago, and I said, yes, I would heartily endorse this. So we have a resolution before us. It was one thing, and I said, I don't know if we'd need a resolution to have this happen. But then I read a template. We have to justify, it would appear, whether it's a good news story or not. And I would beg to change this, that you have one minute to share with council a good news item. One minute. You do drone on at times, me included, kinds of issues. And so, a good news story, yes, one minute, but maybe you could extend it to two. And if every one of us had a good news item, that would be good news. And if we could spend more than 12 minutes, to me, I would ask you to redo this. And the most we could have at any council meeting was three good news stories. So if five submit, only three can get approved. Thank you very much. So I'm going on to bad news part of this now. So I would hope that we, let's just do it. Let's not have a template. If somebody, if a counselor decides, hey, I think I'd like to tell a good news story. I don't know how good it could be. But please, Mr. Mayor, let's just do this, not just have to rationalize and justify whether it meets the, you know, let's say, well, five of us put in, only three got approved. Two of them say, well, you know, I guess I didn't measure up. I may not go back and put another good news story, and maybe it wasn't good enough. Please change this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just to be clear, Counselor Butland, the process and template did not come from me or Agenda Review. The process and template was provided entirely by Counselor Hollingsworth. And, you know, we had no, we put it on the agenda exactly as she gave it to us. So there was no amendment of it at all. So it's not a process that we're actually putting on council. Counselor Shoemaker had a comment.
Hate to be the contrarian on this one, Mr. Mayor, but I'm the one who pulled this from consent. First, because I thought it belonged under Section 8 of the agenda, but that was a separate issue, which I understand. It just, it was converted from correspondence to a motion late in the day. We're a governing body, and we have to get on with the business of governing. So we have proclamations at the beginning. We passed a motion last week that we're going to have these agencies come and tell us what they're doing. Now we're going to have this at the beginning of each meeting. I mean, it's going to be 6 o'clock before we actually get to what we're here to do. And so I, I don't support this, unfortunately.
Okay, Counselor Myers.
Proceed, Mr. Mayor. I was a seconder, so I should have spoken before Counselor Shoemaker. But I'm quite happy to go third.
You're actually fourth.
Yeah, well, anyway, like, let's not make a mountain out of a molehill. Counselor Hollingsworth has done a good piece of work here. She's trying very much, obviously, to guide, because there's been an issue in the past, as you well know, Mr. Mayor, as chair of this, because you're the one that eliminated these on the, on the fly comments. So therefore, this is an effort to guide it. It's very simple. It does not have to be turned into, you know, a state of the, you know, economy address or anything. And if some of us, myself included, could be brief in our comments, we can work within this very quickly. And I don't think, no offense, Counselor Shoemaker, it's ever wrong to take turn, take time to talk about good news in our community. So I strongly support it, and I please ask council to support it. Let's not get hung up on a half-hour discussion here about something that's quite straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Mano.
I'm going to be as long as I possibly can be while I discuss this.
Well, we have planning in 25 minutes, Counselor Mano, so I'd appreciate if you can come in under that timeline.
That was obviously a joke, Mr. Mayor. So this came up one time before. I indicated then that I thought this was a great idea. I think it's a great idea now. I thought it was then. I maintain that position. The, the goal for us as counselors, I think, is definitely, obviously, governance. I agree with Counselor Shoemaker. But any chance we can get to promote our community, we need to take. And I find it impressive how many people talk to us as counselors, and we've all heard this before, about how many actually watch at home. Let's take the opportunity to help them see the good in our community, too.
Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, just a brief question. Is the intent of the request form to be handed into the Agenda Review to, to see if they should, it should be on the agenda?
We'll have to ask Counselor Hollingsworth, because, again, that went on your package exactly as she gave it to us.
Yeah. If, if, if the intent is just to have a couple of minutes at the beginning of the meeting and follow this guideline, I don't have a problem with it. But if we have to send it to Agenda Review for them to review if they think my good news story is good enough to say at council, I have a problem with it.
Listen, let's put it this way. There are often motions that come to Agenda Review that I certainly wouldn't move, or certainly wouldn't second, but they show up on the council agenda. So Agenda Review isn't adjudicating things to determine whether or not we think they're good. There are lots of emotions that, that you guys put the motions forward, they come through, they get on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, this is, my comment was not criticism of the Agenda Review Committee.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear.
Sure. Well, we'd have to ask Counselor Hollingsworth what she was trying to achieve there.
I'm open to having a friendly amendment to not go to Agenda Review, but to basically carve out, and the mayor is excellent at controlling these meetings, he really is, to carve out set amount of time to allow anyone to say a positive story. Because the bottom line is, research has shown, before I put this together, I did my homework. I went and did research in Detroit. Detroit, as we all know, is thriving now. Green Bay is thriving. Looking at Winnipeg, Manitoba, in our own country is thriving. Look at, Barry is thriving. If you look at all these communities, what's the common thread? The common thread is positive attitude. And all due respect to my colleague, Counselor Shoemaker, when you look at an organization, we look at the community, the way to create pride is through positive. For those people at home, I know that member of you do watch 60 Minutes. In fact, last night at 60 Minutes, there was a Goodfield story about changing positive attitude. And it was down in the country of Colombia, I believe, to change the guerrilla warfare. And what they did was change the pride factor. And it escalated. It became a positive disease where the guerrilla warfare has diminished about what they've done. I strongly encourage my other colleagues around this table, this chambers, to support this. And it's not a new concept. We've done it before. And yes, there might be a bump, but I believe we all can control our comments and keep channeling positive. Thank you.
I should, I should just draw counsel's attention to the fact that the motion doesn't refer to the form that Counselor Hollingsworth attached. Yeah, so like, if you pass the motion, it doesn't create this form process. The motion actually reads that be it resolved that city council set aside a few minutes at the beginning of each council meeting for counselors to share positive community stories. That's the motion. Sure, we can. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Just move to Agenda Item 8.1, Sioux area hospital smoking area.
No, you have to do 6.6.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's your designated property tax rebate.
So one second, Mr. Counselor Turco after.
Agenda Item 6.6 that was accepted from the consent motion, motion by Counselors Campodice and Butland, resolved that the report of the manager of Recreation and Culture concerning designated heritage property tax rebates be received, and the recommendation of the Sault Ste. Marie Municipal Heritage Committee that designated heritage property tax rebates for the 2015 tax year be paid to the qualified owners of designated heritage properties enrolled in the program be approved.
Thank you very much, Madam Assistant Clerk. Is that the correct title?
Deputy Clerk.
Deputy Clerk, sir. It's been a while. Do we have any questions on this item 6.6? Come on. Please. Counselor Romano, no questions? Okay. Oh, thank you, Counselor Fata. Go ahead, Counselor Fata.
Maybe whoever, Mr. McConnell, can someone please comment briefly on what goes into deciding what is a heritage home? Because it seems to me that, seems to me that there are a lot of, lot of tax dollars being lost through these designations. And I just like to be clear that there's a black and white approach to this.
Such a question?
Mr. Acting Mayor, I'd like to refer that question to Virginia MacLeod. She could probably answer that question.
Ms. MacLeod?
Through you, Acting Mayor, to Counselor Fata. The committee does have criteria that are set out by the Ontario, province of Ontario, in which they have to follow when they're looking at a designation. So the committee nominates at least two members of the committee to go take a look at a property that has applied for application for designation. They review it against the criteria, which looks at the architectural significance, the historical significance, as well as the cultural significance of a property. Those properties are evaluated, brought back to the committee with a recommendation, and there's a whole evaluation form that is completed and shared with the committee at that point in time.
Were you satisfied with our response?
I'm afraid so.
Thank you, Counselor Fata. I knew the answer, by the way, because I was on the Heritage Committee for many years, as was Counselor Myers. Isn't it Myers? Yes, thank you. That's it? No other questions?
You're done.
I'm done, sure, yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor? Oh, sorry, all in favor? Thanks for reminding me, Dr. CEO.
There's nothing to do, by the way. Yeah, there you go. You should run next time.
Yeah, you can. You can use me in your brochure.
Agenda Item 8.1, Sui Area Hospital Smoking Area, motion by Councilor Shoemaker and Fatah, whereas the entire Sui Area Hospital property is a smoke-free area, and whereas the result of the hospital being a smoke-free property is that people are using the city-owned hub trail as a smoking area, and whereas the hub trail exists to promote health and well-being for the entire community, and should not be used by smokers at the Sui Area Hospital. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Sault Ste. Marie requests that the Sui Area Hospital create a smoking area within their property boundaries.
Council Shoemaker, it's your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not encourage people to smoke. I'm not promoting smoking. I seem to have struck a nerve with this one with some folks, but I'll tell you who's...
And you don't smoke.
I don't smoke, no. I'll tell you who's really ticked are the people whose properties things like this are happening on. Litter, debris. I've had complaints of people who are in the smoking area urinating into private property. It's, it's something that the budding landowners have had to deal with for a number of years. And you, you know, myself, and I'm sure my co-councillor, have reached out to Sui Area Hospital, and it gets better for a brief period of time, and then it sort of goes back to the way it was, which is not good. This summer, I believe, there was a little brush fire in, in the backyard of one of these constituents' properties. So people shouldn't smoke, but they're going to, and they do. And when they're doing it, they're doing it on private property right now, because the Sui Area Hospital doesn't have a smoking area. I think it could be very easily resolved by creating an area where everyone goes to smoke, puts their cigarette butts in, and controls it. That's what, that's what the government, you know, is, is there to do with, with smoking, is regulate and control it. And this is just a way of controlling it, not a way of encouraging it.
Okay. Council Fatah, do you want to speak to it as a seconder?
Thirty seconds.
Well, we'll see, we'll see. Let's do it.
One thing that, that I really find difficult to, you know, to appreciate is, is that the bureaucrats tend to forget that smokers are also human beings. And, and we tend to toss them out there in the furthest possible place, out there in the elements, in order to do something that they, in most cases, can't, really can't control. Thank you very much.
You did it in 20 seconds, Council Fatah. So we have Councilor Myers, and then Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm vehemently opposed to this resolution. I did speak to Councilor Shoemaker and told him that there are amendments that I would agree with, and I think the first step, quite frankly, is to install cigarette depositories of some sort along the boardwalk, and if there's an area to be designated for smoking, I think we're the ones responsible for doing that. It's city property. And, and you know what? I'm gonna draw a parallel between Bellevue Park and Ward II and the neighbors that live abut, abutting to that, that get beer cans, pop cans, litter, cigarettes, all kinds of things, in, in their driveways. The people that live adjacent to the Pine Street Marina. Again, all kinds of issues there with those properties. I absolutely, totally empathize with the people that live on the other side of the boardwalk, private property owners. But the issue is big for us. We're the city property owners of the John Roswell Hub Trail. It's our issue. The Sui Area Hospital is in the business of good health. Absolutely not on the face of this earth are they gonna put a designated smoking area there. You've heard from Janet, what, Janet's last name at Public Health?
Ellen.
Yeah, Janet Allen. Legislation coming in, effective 2018, that would comply them anyway. But I was council's representative on the board, of the hospital board, when we built the new hospital. I was one of the ones that was adamant that the new site needed to be smoke-free. I don't think we have any authority through you, Mr. Mayor, is gonna ask our city solicitor, whether we have legal authority to impose this.
Well, the resolution says request.
Mr. Mayor, through you, to the city solicitor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers. We can ask, but we don't have jurisdiction. Obviously, they fall under provincial jurisdiction, but we can, we can ask them.
Right. I did speak to Mr. Gagnon today. I called him and spoke to him, and he reaffirmed absolutely no way on the face of this earth will the side, will the hospital be going backwards from this. So I really feel the onus is on us as a city. It's our city property that we can designate a smoking area if that's what's desired. And I think that that designation is simply to install the proper cigarette depositories. We have them at our condo buildings. They're a vertical thing made out of heavy plastic. I'm sure the deputy CEO of Public Health is quite aware of what they are. They're not thousands and thousands of dollars by any means. So I think if you wanted to install half a dozen of them and create an area, there, there's a designated smoking area.
On that point, though, Councilor Myers, just for some clarity, we, the hospital owns that property, we have an easement over it, so I'm not sure if that easement would allow us to do that. We would need some clarity from our staff.
On the John Roswell Hub Trail portion, I mean, it's not all. Some of it's city property.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, you certainly wouldn't want to be putting them actually on the hub trail, 'cause people, you know, traverse up and down the trail. The side of the trail, again, I, I've been down this road with, before with other councillors, and it's, it is private property. It isn't our property. So I don't know if that we would have the authority to be able to put anything in that area.
Well, I, I would wonder if the, I mean, when you go on to the private property on the residential side, there's a, a section of that property that's, I'll call it an easement with the city, that abuts to the trail. Forget the hospital side, go to the private property side. I guess we're not gonna get in here, this, down the weeds. All I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is that I believe there's some other options here. Mr. Gagnon is certainly very open to sitting down with our senior staff, and what I said to the councillor was, let's get our senior staff to sit down with the hospital senior staff, highlight the issue again. It's kind of like the work we've done with graffiti. You're not gonna eradicate it, but you need to find a common ground to help manage this together. I certainly agree that the residents shouldn't have to put up with some of what they're putting up with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have visited the hospital quite a few times in the last couple of months, and it, it does look unsightly seeing the folks smoke in that area. And said that, though, I can't believe we're actually still talking about smoking after all these years. And, and we haven't come up with a solution yet, Councilor Myers. But my question to the city solicitor, you might've tried to ask that question earlier. Where do we have jurisdiction right now, provincially and municipally, where people can smoke or can't smoke? If we did, if we get a positive response that the hospital would build something on their property, which is, doesn't sound like it's going to happen, can we fine the people if they still continue smoking in that area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Turco. We, of course, have jurisdiction over city-owned land. We are confined by certain provincial acts that govern us, such as the Smoking in the Workplace Act, so we must comply with that. And we have to comply with the Smoke Free Ontario legislation, which requires us, you know, not to have smoking areas in, for example, City Hall. We've also passed a number of bylaws that restrict smoking, I think, in a certain radius from play areas. So it would be a little counterintuitive, I think, now to move forward with a, a smoking area in one of those such areas. So our, our jurisdiction is, is rather limited, particularly when you come to other entities and agencies that are governed by federal or provincial laws.
So, follow-up then, through you, Mr. Mayor. So if people continue smoking there, after a designated area was, was built, we still have no control where people smoke?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Turco. I just wanna make sure that I'm answering your question. If they're smoking on hospital lands, because the hospital has seen fit to...
Yes.
...create a smoking area, we don't have jurisdiction over that.
But what about the current location?
On private property?
Well, on the sidewalk, or on the street.
Really, we can't enforce that.
So, so the answer is no.
Yeah, more jurisdiction stopping people from smoking.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Councilor Campodice.
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. I agree with Councilor Myers that we should be looking at some other options beside this one. I mean, we have a difficult time requesting a hospital to create a smoking area when the very physicians that are taking care of the sick people are expecting them to quit smoking. Yet we're not gonna ask the hospital to go ahead and create an area for them to smoke? It just doesn't quite add up. But I do agree that there should be some options there that we could possibly look at, but I can't support the resolution as it is.
Councilor Mano.
A little bit surprised that we're going around this lengthy on this matter. If we were asking to force them, the hospital, to do this, then I can appreciate the nature of the discussion. It's a simple request, but quite frankly, we talk about legislating is some of the conversation that's been going on, on the actual smoking issue, but the rule is already there that you need, which is don't litter. That's really the rule, but we don't have the ability to enforce it, because we've got an underlying problem with our not having a bylaw officer, and we've talked about this several times before. So if we had the resources to have somebody working more so with respect to these issues, the problem would already be solved. Ultimately, I know a friend of my left ear is going to be asking for a recorded vote, so I will say that at the end of the day, this is a request. It's not us forcing anything. So do I have a problem with just saying, hey, guys, do you mind having a smoking area? And if it's gonna be a no, then so be it. It's a no. Then here we are back at the drawing board. Quite frankly, I think it would've been nicer before the resolution came as a request. I don't think we needed a resolution to simply get some of that information, Councilor Myers, since she knows they're gonna say no. So I, I, quite frankly, if we need it just for the purposes of the resolution, to say, let's get our no, and then where do we go from here? I would think we could've already known that coming into this, and, and maybe had a different discussion about this issue. I do agree it's a serious issue for the residents. I agree it's something that I can understand why the hospital wouldn't want to do, but all we're being asked to do by way of this resolution is to ask. That's all.
Councilor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quite simply, I, I can't support this, knowing that the Sui Area Hospital's not going to agree with this anyway, so I would suggest that maybe the movers of the resolution consider changing the resolution and send it to our staff for a brief report on what we can do and if what we can't do. I think it, you know, we've had most of it answered tonight, to put it down in a, a report form. Certainly could come back to us and maybe would answer this for Councilor Shoemaker and the residents in that area. But I, I won't support sending it a request that we know is gonna be true.
Councilor Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor. I think this, I do feel for the residents. I, I truly do. I guess my question is, I don't know if we can answer this question, but under the provincial Health Ministry of Health, is there a rule, is there a bylaw, is there a law that states that all hospitals cannot have a designated smoking area?
My understanding is, we'll have the city solicitor speak to this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Hollingsworth, my, my understanding of it is, it's, it's pending.
Sorry, pending 2018?
Yes.
So that means in 2018, there's going to be a new bylaw, new legislator?
New legislation. I don't know if it's gonna come in the form of an amendment to the statute or a regulation, but there will be, my understanding is, there will be no smoking areas permitted on hospital-owned properties, period.
All across the province?
The province, correct.
Interesting. Okay. That's, if I may say, that's interesting information to know before we go ahead and vote on this. Second piece is, I know some of the picture, there's litter, but is there not litter all throughout the hub trail? And does the hub trail not go on other people's property or, the point I'm making is, I think, I'm not gonna support this tonight, because I think that more discussion and investigation has to be taken place, because the hub trail goes all through the different parts of the city. And seeing this pile of garbage, I'm sure, is not the only place on the hub trail. So maybe we need to relook at how garbage is disposed. Thank you.
Okay, so, Council Shoemaker, I think we're about ready to, you asked for a recorded vote. There was some suggestion that maybe if you amended your motion, do you have some desire to do that at this point?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, to, to send it to staff to try and, try and work out a solution with Sui Area Hospital?
So, yeah, so you'd have to kind of give us a little more direction on that, Councilor Shoemaker.
Let me just pull up the actual motion here.
Quick question, please.
You can ask a question.
Yeah, while he's pulling that up. I'm just curious, are we allowed to put a camera, like something along the lines of a, a trail cam, in the area? To monitor, and then, I'm just curious if, if that's even...
I think the answer to that question would be, yes, we could put a trail camera wherever we want, on our property.
Right, I would think so. Just in terms of making it easier for a bylaw officer to do his job afterwards, been reviewing.
I think we have Councilor Shoemaker's amended motion here, so...
Yeah, so if, just all the, all the whereas's would stay the same, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Sault Ste. Marie staff consult with the Sui Area Hospital regarding the creation of a smoking area? Period?
So would you like your motion voted on, Council Shoemaker?
Sure. Why don't we do that?
So we're, we're gonna call the vote, and it's recorded vote. We're gonna vote on this motion, and then if, if you want to talk to staff about something in the future, you can do that. So the motion's been read, and the Madam Clerk will go through the recorded vote.
Councilor Butland?
Against.
Councilor Myers?
Against.
Council Bruni?
Against.
Council Nero?
Against.
Council Romano?
So it didn't change. All right. Um, against. I'm sorry.
You voted.
Yeah, no, I, I've said against, but subject to that legislation that we heard about coming in effect.
It's a vote here. Councilor Shoemaker?
For.
Council Hollingsworth?
Against.
Council Hoopanen?
I have a conflict, Mr. Mayor, so...
Oh, you didn't declare, I'm sorry, you didn't declare at the beginning of the meeting. Councilor Hollingsworth declares a conflict on the matter. Hoopanen, I apologize. Councilor Campodice?
I'm against.
Council Christian?
For.
Council Fatah?
For.
Council Turco?
Against.
Mayor Provenzano?
Against.
The motion fails.
About that motion? No, no. Okay, so we're at the planning agenda, so we have two matters on our planning agenda. Madam Clerk, so we're at 7.?
6.1.
7.6.1.
Application A1716Z, 1044 Great Northern Road, motion by councillors Campodice and Butland, resolved that the report of the senior planner dated December 12, 2016, concerning A1716Z, 1044 Great Northern Road be received, and that council rezone the subject property from Highway Zone HZS336 to Highway Zone with an amended special exception 336 to permit personal services as an additional permitted use, and that the legal department be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw to effect this approval.
Mr. McConnell, are you prepared to speak to the planning application to give some information about it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. This application is for the recently constructed Guy's Autobody Building on Great Northern Road. At some point during construction, it was decided to add a beauty salon to the building. While all building code issues have been addressed, the application does require a rezoning to be finalized. This is being recommended by council, and Mr. Ionelli is in attendance tonight, should council have any questions.
Does Mr. Ionelli, the applicant, want to identify yourself? Do you want to speak to this matter, Mr. Ionelli?
I don't need to.
Okay, I, I'm not, you don't have to. We're just asking if you want the opportunity to speak to it. So we have our planning director here to speak to. So we have our planning director here to speak to, we also have Mr. Ionelli that can answer any questions about the application. Do we have any questions of the applicant or about the application? Seeing none, do we have anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none and seeing no questions, all in favor of the application? Application's carried. Thank you, Mr. Ionelli.
Under Agenda Item 7.6.2, A 1816Z 65 Simon Avenue, a motion by Councilors Kompadich and Butland, resolved that the report of the senior planner dated December 12, 2016, concerning application A 1816Z 65 Simon Avenue, Queen Street frontage, be received and that the subject property be rezoned from C4S 162 General Commercial with a Special Exception to C4S General Commercial, amending the S162 to allow as an additional permitted use personal storage in association with a motor vehicle sales and parts dealer, subject to the following. One, that the provisions of S162 relating to setbacks landscaping and coverage be maintained, that outdoor storage shall be 100% visually screened from all streets and residential buildings using a combination of landscaping and building components to visually screen outdoor storage areas. That outdoor storage shall be limited to the storage of automobiles, boats, and recreational vehicles. That no automobiles, boats, or recreational vehicles that are wrecked, dismantled, or inoperative shall be permitted on site. That the existing trees stand to the west of the proposed building be maintained. That the existing trees stand to the east of the proposed building be maintained until such time as a future development occurs, and that as part of that development, a tree retention and planting plan shall be provided, showing which trees can be preserved and/or planted as part of a new development. That the applicant agrees to provide a walkway connection within the subject property connecting the Denwood subdivision to Queen Street East, and that the legal department be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw to effect this approval.
Okay. Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Despite the address, this property fronts on Queen Street East, it's directly across from the East End sewage treatment plant and immediately west of the personal storage facility that was built a few years ago. The proposed use is very similar to a personal storage facility. It will have an outside storage element of it, but that will be completely screened from the neighbors as well as from the roadway. It is recommended for approval. Mr. Harmer is in attendance tonight on behalf of the applicant, should council have any questions.
Welcome to council, Mr. Harmer. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no, Your Worship. As Mr. McConnell indicated, I'm simply here to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. So Mr. Harmer's here on behalf of the applicant, Councilor Christian has a question.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this one's directed through you to Mr. McConnell. In the documentation, sir, it says that a couple of people, neighbors, came forward with some concerns. I just want to be clear that those concerns were vetted and that the, those two residents were essentially satisfied with, with the outcome.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Christian, we did receive three letters from, from abutting residents, and our staff did talk to all three of the, of the residents. The concerns were mainly about the appearance of it, and in particular, that the trees stand between this property, it's actually to the west of where the building will be built, and the abutting homes will be maintained, and it will be.
Okay. And my last question through you, Mr. Mayor, again to Mr. McConnell, there was talk about a, a walking path being built from the subdivision behind. Can you just comment? I want to be clear on what exactly the status of that and where that is going.
Mr. Mayor, again to Councilor Christian, as part of the approval for the residential subdivision to the north of this property along Simon Avenue, there was arrangements made to put a walking path in, a walkway down to Queen Street, because otherwise the distance for residences would be quite great if they were wanting to walk down to a bus stop, for instance. We've spoken to Mr. Biassucci, who is the developer of that subdivision. He's agreeable to changing the location of it because it fits in with the proposal in front of us now. The owner of the property that's before council tonight has also agreed, so it appears that all parties are in agreement with that. However, that walkway will not be constructed until such time as the residential subdivision is constructed.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harmer?
Councilor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, a question for Mr. McConnell. Mr. McConnell, condition number three, the outdoor storage shall be limited to storage of automobiles, boats, and recreational vehicles. Are we to assume this is new inventory that we're talking about, just a place to store new inventory?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it will be primarily new inventory, but it is not limited to only new inventory.
So new or used, but condition, there's another condition that addresses vehicles in disrepair, I guess.
That's correct. If it's not an operational vehicle, it would not be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional questions? Do we have anybody here that is here to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody that's here to speak in opposition to the application?
Sorry, not in opposition, but I'm the adjacent resident.
Sorry, if you could stand and come to the microphone, please, sir? You can just introduce yourself to council, please.
Okay, sorry for my late arrival, chasing three children. But yeah, my name is Jim McCabe, and I'm located in 2172, just adjacent to the property in question for development. And I might have missed some, some key points, but everything that this gentleman was speaking of, I agree, and I just want to, my main concern is the appearance of the property. And it's the same owner that owns the current storage facility adjacent to that property?
No.
It's a different, it's a different owner?
It's a different owner, yes.
Okay, because I thought maybe it might have something to do with them because the property there, I think, for the most part, been well-maintained and kept up. My only concern is, we talked about the, or have heard about the buffer zone, or the trees, the mature trees that are there right now, next to my property?
Yes.
That apparently will remain?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And otherwise, you know, the idea of, I'm just speaking to some of my wonderful neighbors, we're all on the, on the same consensus that a fence, I'm assuming it'll be similar to the, the other facility where it's setback, and we were concerned about mature trees or something that's not started from a seedling. And I know there's obviously an added cost to the developer to, to put up some nice organic vegetation that, that's mature. But we were hoping that they would put their best foot forward and try to establish some more mature trees to kind of get the, the place.
Do you have any comments on that, Mr. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, a couple of things. The applicant has prepared a landscaping plan, which I'd be happy to share with Mr. McCabe, as well as the existing trees will remain. Perhaps council should be aware that the proposed use and the owner of the property is the same owner as Great Lakes Honda, and we have been speaking with them. They're very concerned about having a very high standard of development and having it look good. I mean, it does reflect on their business. So hopefully that will, will make people feel better about the application. It certainly, their intent to have a high standard of development with extensive landscaping.
Okay. Yeah. So you can share that landscaping plan with Mr. McCabe?
Certainly, yeah. Sure. I think that's everything. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Okay.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else here to speak to the application, either for or against? Seeing none, council has no additional questions, it doesn't appear, all in favor, the application is carried. Thank you, sir.
Under Agenda Item 7.2.1, economic development review, have a motion by Councilors Kompadich and Butland, resolved that the report of the Deputy CAO Community Development and Enterprise Services dated December 12, 2016, concerning review of Sault Ste. Marie's economic development enablers and investments be received and referred to staff to consult with the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center and Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation and report back to council in January 2017 concerning implementation of the recommendations of the report. And further, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Sault Ste. Marie and the Sault Ste. Marie Economic Development Corporation dated August 2009, staff be directed to provide formal notice of termination of the said Memorandum of Understanding. And further, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Sault Ste. Marie and the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center dated September 2009, that staff be directed to provide formal notice of termination of said Memorandum of Understanding.
Councilor Butland?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like my name removed as the seconder.
Sure.
The resolution as proposed, I'm not in favor of.
Councilor Shoemaker, were you putting your hand up a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, we're going to have the CEO speak to the matter, and then we'll start that way. We also have Mr. Brock, your last name Brock?
Brock Dickinson.
Brock Dickinson, I didn't want to screw that one up. So, and Brock Dickinson's from the consultant, and he's here to answer any questions you have. So we'll, we'll pass it off to the CEO, and we'll follow his lead, and he can poll in Mr. Vera and Mr. Dickinson, as he sees fit.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, to council regarding this report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Vera and to Mr. Dickinson to respond to questions on the two pieces. There are actually two reports in front of council this evening. First is the report from MDB Insights on the ECTV review that has been completed, it's the final, has been submitted, and that was completed on the basis of a workshop, a significant workshop with all stakeholders within the community, combined with extensive interviews and review of best practices and other materials that were provided by the municipality with respect to EDC, to the Innovation Center, and on other fronts related to economic development within the city. And it was all done in a consistent manner, or a manner consistent with the terms of reference that were created and sent out through the RFP process by the team, RFP team that consisted of the representation from the Economic Development Corporation, representation from the Innovation Center, and representation from the city. So Mr. Dickinson's here to speak to the, that report. The second report is that from staff. So now that we've received this report, we are suggesting that we need to now go work with the collaborative partners and say, so what are we going to do with the recommendations that have been provided by the third-party consultant? And so our recommendation is we're going to be going and working with the partners, EDC, Innovation Center, to be able to do that. In the meantime, it is incumbent on us to be seeking to provide notice of termination for the MOUs for the two entities, because notwithstanding what may come out of the discussion with the partners, whether it's a single one or whether it remains as two entities as part of the discussion, there's a number of items there that the city and administration realizes needs to be undertaken in terms of shoring up the, the arrangements and relationships between the city and the entities. And so that's why we're looking for the notice of termination. We also, because it has a year-long notice period, for funding purposes, it's incumbent upon us to do this now. That does not mean that these are going to be terminated, that just means that we're giving notice and that we're going to be working through the process. It might be that through six months' time, it's determined that there's only going to be some slight tweaks that could occur to the MOU. It might be that there's other things that need to be done. So that's, but we nonetheless need to give the notice. So very long-winded preamble to it, but I wanted to make sure that there was some background for this. And with that, I would turn it to Mr. Dickinson to speak to his report, and then we'll turn it to Mr. Vera to speak to the city staff's report. So perhaps, Brock, you could just give us a quick overview of the study so that the people at home understand what's in there.
Absolutely, and through you, Your Worship, I'm happy to share a quick summary of the content of the report. As has been suggested, this has been entitled a review of investments, and I think that's a key sort of aspect to understanding what this report was intended to do. The city has a range of economic development investments that it makes on an ongoing basis into structures, including the Economic Development Corporation, the Innovation Center, and the EDF. These were described in your initial RFP as enablers of economic development. And so the focus of this study was really to understand how the resources that you're providing as a council and as a city are enabling certain activities in the economic development space. So the goal of this process was not to review specific projects in the past, or to review personnel, or to review any sort of those kinds of aspects of things. And in fact, as we, as we met with and talked to the organizations in this space over the course of the project, we were generally impressed with the range and the scope, the diversity, and the impact of economic development activities that your enablers are engaged in. But we also recognized that the space that they're working in, in this community, is very complex. There's a range of organizations in addition to the ones that you fund that make this a very complicated space. And so our task, as we saw it in conducting this review, is to really understand how the city could best orient its funds, its investments, to maximize its impact on those enablers, and to kind of enable the greatest economic development returns in the community. And in part, that related to the ways in which your support can be provided to the structures that are on the ground, and in part, that related to understanding kind of best practices and new practices that are emerging in the economic development space. We undertook a number of activities to get to the report that you have in front of you this evening, consultations, as was referenced, both in the terms of formal workshops, but also one-on-one meetings and phone interviews and those kinds of things. We did a detailed sort of operational review of these various enabling structures, looking at financial records, looking at different sort of aspects of organizational operations. We conducted a great deal of research into best practices and memorandum, memorandum of understandings as they exist in other communities, as well as a detailed look at things like performance measures and performance metrics. How do you understand how well your economic development investments are achieving the stated goals? From that, we made a series of recommendations, which can be broken into four kind of broad areas. First, we suggested that there need to be an updating of the EDF, that the way in which the fund is currently positioned could use a bit of a reexamination and a review that relates to understanding from a return on investment perspective what it is achieving for you, and understanding the need for clearer terms around that fund moving forward, so that there can be clearly stated objectives, and that can be, the results of those investments can be measured more clearly over time. Secondly, we suggested the possibility of consolidating some of these existing structures, and in particular, the Economic Development Corporation and the Innovation Center. And there were a series of recommendations around that, including the opportunities for enhanced structures in terms of internal reviews of organization and performance. Third, we suggested that the MOUs that you use to make these investments needed to be restructured and revisited, and that this is in part in light of changing practices from municipalities across Ontario. The way in which those MOUs have been developed in recent years has changed fairly significantly. We've suggested that as a community, you can learn from some of those emerging practices to strengthen the kinds of MOUs that you have in place, to more clearly articulate your goals as a city in terms of the funding that you're providing to the, to these enablers, and to help them understand the objectives that you have in providing those funds, but also to recognize the limitations of what your contributions to those organizations mean, and that almost all of the structures that we reviewed had funding coming in from other sources and other, other interests as well. And so the city's contribution is one of many in those structures. And then finally, we did make some recommendations around a corporate restructuring process, and things like the composition of boards of directors, the staffing implications of some of the recommendations, the potential for co-location of some of the operations of these organizations, et cetera. So there's a series of specific recommendations along those lines. And I guess over the course of this evening, I'd be happy to respond to any specific questions you have about those.
I'm sure there will be a number, thank you. Mr. Vera, do you want to add anything at this point before we start taking questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, not at this point.
Okay. So we've got, I've already got a little bit of a list going here because everybody's been throwing their, their hands up. I've got Shoemaker first, Councilor Butland, I see you throw your hand up, I wasn't quite sure what it, you went like this, and then you pulled...
Yeah, it's on the list somewhere.
Okay. So Councilor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple different people who I have questions of. I guess I'll start with Mr. Dickinson, right? The recommendation of the EDC and SSMIC and EDF review report was that they be consolidated, essentially, and that the EDF come under city control. But were there other structures that were considered and discounted? Because I didn't really see that in the report, but I'm thinking to get to that, you may have considered some other options.
Through you, Your Worship, to Councilor Shoemaker, there were a number of other options that were considered, and in fact, the report was accompanied by a much more detailed technical analysis that we provided for staff as well. So we did examine options, including things like making this an internal department of the city rather than arms-length corporation, or considering, sort of looking at a further breaking up of structures, a separate tourism organization, for example. But we felt that ultimately, in terms of the space that we saw within the community where there could be an opportunity to kind of create some new synergies and some new opportunities forward, we landed on the notion of a consolidation.
And that was, obviously, there were some points in the report about cost savings, efficiencies, but is it just sort of, that that was, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, ask you a leading question, but it seems that's what I'm doing. Was it just because overall that was the best structure, or was it something in particular that, that said, we've got to go with this one?
Through you, Your Worship, I think that we were reflecting on a few things. The first is that we are seeing some level of consolidation of economic development structures across the province. There are more regional initiatives coming together. The province is contemplating regional structures. We've seen, as is referenced in the report, Invest Ottawa emerge as a structure where economic development and innovation operations have been combined together. So we do feel that there are some trends leading in this direction, and that it did suggest some significant opportunities to kind of be at the front end of that kind of a process. I think that we did sort of look at the notion of efficiencies, and I guess I would be reluctant to use the phrase cost savings per se, because I'm somebody who's spent 25 years in economic development. I'd like to think that if we're able to identify some efficiencies, what we're really doing is identifying additional resources that could be reinvested in the economic development space, and that could be directed towards more activity in this space, or more effective activity in this space, rather than simply looking for an opportunity to cut budgets. So I think what we were really trying to do is to say, if we can achieve some of these efficiencies, we can actually start to do more with the resources that are available.
And to that point, and I don't think I missed it, but is there a recommendation as to what to do with those savings that would come out of the efficiencies, or do you, do you leave that to us?
I think there are not explicit recommendations along those lines. I think there were a number of possibilities that came to the fore, and one is the sort of the... And one is the sort of the reallocation of some of those resources internally to sort of continue to expand the range and scope of programs. Some might relate to sort of expanding of the physical space associated with certain programs, so looking forward over time as we think about incubation programs and the ability to kind of grow those and bring more companies into those spaces. But I think we also contemplated the notion that there might be a desire in putting more, more resources into the EDF itself as a way of kind of more directly impacting some of the opportunities that exist at the community level. That fund is not as large today as it once was historically, and so we recognize that sometimes council rests with the, with the challenge of not being able to fund all of the projects that come before, that it might like to participate.
Thank you. And through you always, Mr. Mayor, there was one reference in the report to an innovation board, because you weren't sure on the structure exactly if it was permissible, I guess, under provincial legislation?
Through you, your worship, yeah, this is, to a certain extent, a new approach. Although Invest Ottawa has combined its operations to kind of make sure that it's paying its due respects to all of its funders, it's maintained two separate board structures within, within the single organization. We suspect, and based on some very sort of informal discussions, we feel that the province would support the notion of a single board, but we didn't want to predetermine that in the scope of the report, and so we kind of left that space open to say, it could have two separate boards, one focused on innovation and one focused on more traditional and core economic development activities, or ideally, those could be brought together under a single structure, which would begin to allow that sort of notion of efficiencies within the organization.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, would having that separate board, I guess there's two parts to this question, would having that separate board, one, would it, in your opinion, create an inefficiency in the, in the system? And two, if that's not the case, would it allow this innovation branch of the, of the amalgamated entity to access, you know, funding that otherwise might not be available to it if there was just one consolidated board?
And through you, your worship, I don't think that the presence of one or two boards will have a significant impact on the fundraising opportunities. I think that, that the organization itself and the activities that it's proposing are what will sort of carry the most weight in that space. I think that we do see, as we look at, you know, for example, innovation centre-style structures across the province and across the country, we often see that they have a range of advisory structures in place. So a board of directors has a specific governance role in terms of managing the organization, which may or may not relate to the need for advice and things occurring with the innovation space. And so innovation centers and incubators more generally are sort of relying on the use of executives or entrepreneurs in residence, of technical advisory committees as a way of kind of bridging the gap to the sort of specialized knowledge that's needed to support innovation, which may be very different than the kinds of skills you want to have on a board that's focused on governance kinds of issues.
Makes some sense. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all for Mr. Dickinson, although I do have some for, not sure if it'd be Mr. Ver or Cao Horstman, about the recommendation.
About the motion?
About the motion, yes.
Sure. So either-
Just interrupt your question and then they'll, they'll pick it up as they see fit.
So what, what contents can we expect back in, in such a report? Like, I'm thinking specifically, will it address who will pay for any transition costs? Will it address who will manage the transition? Will it address how the boards will work together to, or not, to appoint the transition manager?
If I can just interrupt you there for one, for a second, Council Shoemaker, because I want to address a point that a few councillors raised with me before this meeting. I appreciate why the resolution's being read the way it is, but the resolution doesn't presuppose a transition to one agency. So the, the first part of the resolution indicates that they have to go work with SMIC and the EDC to, to come back to us with some recommendations. This resolution doesn't collapse two agencies into one. Obviously, there would be different courses of action if all three parties, the city, SMIC, and the EDC got together and saw a path forward and brought that path forward to council jointly, there would be a certain set of information recommendations went with that. If that didn't come to pass and staff had different recommendations on how we should proceed independent of that collaboration, then they would be bringing back those recommendations. But if you look at the first part of the resolution, it's to send staff away to work with the EDC and the Innovation Centre to come back to us. The second and the third part that relates to notice is a technical legal issue that we can speak to separately. But I just want to be clear that this by no means collapses these two agencies into one agency. It's just empowering staff to start the first step of the process. If there's no uptake or cooperation or interest in that from the agencies, they're separate, they're separate entities, they're separate legal entities with separate boards. We're just a funder. But then we would have to take that and have a discussion at that point about what we wanted to do about that and how we wanted to approach it. But this was a thoughtful, and I understand and appreciate the confusion because of the number of people who raised it with me, but it was a thoughtful approach to show, okay, we're going to do step one, which is that the CEO and, and the deputy CEO are going to go and consult on this with the EDC and the Innovation Centre. But we're going to have to get back kind of what step one looks like before we can really get into a discussion about transitionary processes. So the report might not have anything that relates to that because we might not actually get to that, that day. So then it would be really focused on, okay, well, this is, this is what we as city staff think that city council should do.
Okay. That, that's helpful. Then just one more question, and I'll be done. I understand, I think from Cao Horstman's comments at the beginning, that there's a 12-month notice period within the MOUs on which you have to give to terminate them. Is it a permissive 12 months, as in we will terminate them in 12 months, or that we are able to terminate them come 12 months from now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker, I mean, I certainly would look to legal in terms of that, but the understanding is that we could amend it anytime and it's in it, within that 12-month period. It's just saying, we're looking at an end date, so it's, it's like a contract. We're looking at an end date. If we haven't found some means that we're going to be able to revise that contract term, for lack of a better way of describing it, then it's going to be finished, and then this is the next direction is what we would take on.
Thank you. Would it, would it be possible, perhaps it's a question to the city solicitor, would it be possible to go beyond the 12 months is the question?
Maybe we can have the city solicitor speak to the intention of sections two and three of the motion?
Aye, I think so. Through you, Mr. Mayor, Council Shoemaker, under the MOU, there's a 12-month notice period for termination. Amendment can happen at any time on consent. So if it's going to be a material, if it's going to be material amendments, and that's sort of the scent I'm getting, my recommendation to council would be to give notice of termination because that's a clock that you can't turn back. And in the interim, if we come to one mind and change it into an amendment rather than a termination, we can turn that back. But if you don't start the clock running, you're handcuffed by that 12-month term.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, so we have Counsel Myers. I've got, I've got a list going here, counsel, so I've seen, I've seen all the hands, so we've got you. So if Shoemaker's done, Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And your comments a few moments ago addressed the first part of what I have noted here for some of my questions, but I'm going to pursue a little bit of clarification. Tom Ver, in your recommendation in the report, your statement reads, "Report back to council in January 2017 with a plan to implement the recommendations in the report." And as the mayor just said, that was one that I called you for clarification on that earlier today, because to me, I read it as, interpreted as meaning everything in the consultant's report would be implemented verbatim, because that's what it says. It says to implement the recommendations in the report. And I can't, for the life of me, expect that that would be in January. So I'd like to ask you, Tom, if you could just take a few moments and expand a little bit further on what you had told me earlier today. I think that you told me your plan in moving forward will certainly include extensive dialogue with the two parties involved, and I have a question around the full picture of these two entities in terms of their funding as well. But if you deal with the first part, please, through you, Mr. Mayor, you're really your plan and the realistic timeframes around it.
Go ahead, Ms. Ver.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, that is correct. Our intent is to engage with the two organizations, as they are independent organizations, and review the contents of the, the report that MDB Insight has put together, and then discuss with them a potential path forward based off those recommendations. So certainly, there would be extensive dialogue there, and we would come back to council, really with the report on what that initial dialogue has entailed and the path forward and timelines forward from there.
Thank you. I think it's very important, a very critical point at the outset of probably what's going to be quite a discussion here in the next few minutes, Mr. Mayor, both for the public and for the entities who are in the gallery this evening. The chairs of the boards are there, the board members are there, staff are there. I think it's really important that the message is very clear, and you articulated it a moment ago, we're not collapsing anything tonight or perhaps in the future. We're looking at dialogue to begin on a plan forward, and I think that's very important, and we don't want to lose that point at all. So the second part of my question, I think, through you, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Ver is able to answer, looking at the total funding of these two entities, I want to again highlight the fact that the city of Sault Ste. Marie's investment is one part. For example, I believe the Innovation Centre, $278,000 out of our core budget. Do you know the full budget? I think you might know that, Mr. Ver, the full budget of the SSMIC.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, the, I won't get the exact number of it, it's in excess of $4 million, the entire budget of the Innovation Centre. So there is significant funding from different levels of government, as well as services they provide that make up the entire budget.
And I think that's a critical point to be aware of, council. We're talking about $278,000 of our investment, which is quite significant, but bear in mind, the whole budget is $4 million. So there are many other partners involved here. And then on the EDC, do you happen to know that one, Mr. Ver? 1.7 million is the city contribution there, but do you happen to know it, not the EDF, but just the, the EDC Corporation?
I'm not as familiar with, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, not as familiar with EDC budget, but my understanding is it's in excess of $3 million for the entire EDC budget, $4 million. Thank you.
Sure. So again, what's, a point I'm trying to make here is that even at that, we're less than 50% of the funding agency for that corporation. So there's many other people who have a vested interest in what we're doing here as we begin this process. The province and the, and the federal, provincial, federal government partners are significant in both of these agencies. So I think we have to bear that in mind, council. The, my understanding is, and this is where we get to the MOU, and I don't know, through you, Mr. Mayor, if our city solicitor can remind me, I know that I was on council when we wrote our first MOU, and I believe it was my former wardmate, Counselor Shane, who initiated it. So it's not that many years that we have had an MOU. Do you know, through you, Mr. Solicitor, when the first MOU was established? I believe it was first with the EDC and then secondly with the Innovation Centre. Okay, looking at our Cao?
What year?
Yeah. The MOU that I've read and I have on my desk that I refer to is dated 2009. I don't know if that was the first one.
That sounds to me to be about right. City Solicitor, do you have anything further on that?
Through-
The first MOU.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, just as, just as the mayor was speaking, the bell went off. It was 2009, yes.
Yes.
Was that the bell?
That was the bell.
And that was with the EDC, and I think the Innovation Centre came later, because I think it was established later. So my point being that let's not get hung up on, we, we do need to do what was outlined and I think said about the MOUs. We need to terminate so that we can go forward with whatever news is going to be. But I don't think we have to be too concerned, Mr. Mayor Dewey, about timelines on the MOUs. We operated for some years without any MOUs. There's good faith here, too. We're not, you know, so I don't want council to get concerned about timelines on that.
Innovation Centre's MOU is also 2009.
Okay, they're both the same year. Okay. So they both existed. I don't know when Innovation Centre began, but certainly the EDC, certainly the EDC is around for many years prior to having an MOU. So my point is simply that I don't think we need to be too hung up on that. But an example, I want to ask this question. It's my understanding, through you, Mr. Mayor, and I think Mr. Ver can answer it, that the Innovation Centre currently pays approximately $90,000 in leased space to Alghoma U, but in fact, Alghoma U gave notice to vacate, so they were looking at something else anyway. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, that is correct. Alghoma University required some of their space within the convergence centre that the Innovation Centre is based, so the organization is looking at new office space to house the entire organization.
Right. Except for the incubator, would that be correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, that is correct. The Innovation Centre currently has office space, the Accelerator Hub at 258 Queen Street.
Across from SRS Centre, I think so, yep. So bottom line is that this is timely in that regard. If, if we can look at city civic centre, some leased space, that becomes a revenue stream for us as well, and that's a very critical point, as we all know. In terms of the Economic Development Corporation, and you could correct me, Mr. Mayor, you may know this, but certainly our Cao, I don't think at this time the EDC pays for leased space in civic centre.
Answer to the mic.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, at present time, no.
What is the square footage that the Economic Development Corporation has in City Hall? Do you or Mr. Ver know that answer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll look to Mr. Ver. I know this question came up earlier today. I wasn't able to get a number.
Well, it looks like neither of the Toms, Tom Ver or Tom Dodd, is going to be able to answer that question, so we'll get that information to council.
Well, I guess the point being that I think we're looking at $11 a square foot for the 6,000 square feet on the sixth floor that the Innovation Centre would be considering, or if, you know, obviously, they've got to find a home regardless of what happens going forward here. So I think we might have a new tenant there. But needless to say, they have to be treated the same way. So again, I would suggest, if this kind of thing's in an MOU, I know they're all throwing something at me, I can see the looks. Don't forget, I worked with some of these people for 14 years, so. The point being that, you know, we, we, these are the kinds of things that aren't covered in an MOU right now. It's just one tiny example of many things going forward. So we do need a new MOU, that's very clear. So I just, the point of my comments, Mr. Mayor, is simply to please alleviate some of the, I'm sure angst that there is, and misunderstanding that there can be out there. It was here among ourselves. In terms of, we're not rushing. For me, there's two Cs involved here, that we're moving forward carefully and cautiously. And that is what I would suggest is going to guide us here, and I look forward to this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say, I think this report is a good start for discussions. And thank you to our CEO for clarifying how the next few steps are going to unfold, and to my wardies, Counselor Myers. Also, for the people at home, I like the idea that, again, she used the two Cs, but it sounds like you, and I'm emphasizing, the city is going to be working with the two areas. My question is this, as you work with the areas, the EDC and Innovation Centre, staff in those two groups are talented. They have given us some really good ideas in the past. Are we open to tweaking this plan to possibly incorporate some of their ideas now that they've had a chance to thoroughly go through it?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Again, there's nothing concrete that is coming out. This is a, a third party has taken a look at investment into economic development within the city. We're now going, proposing that we go forward and have that collaborative effort with the two organizations, and that, of course, will include input from those organizations right down to whatever level that they go within that organization. Again, it's not set in stone, and it, but we need to, but we need to have the conversations, and as described on a couple of the speakers already to date, it's not just because we're looking to see something emerging. We need to have a revised MOU, just because of the changed world we're in with our new economy sort of going on a certain trajectory, but we need to also recognize our traditional economy, and so that's why we're looking for that collaborative effort to be undertaken.
Thank you. Again, that's a very positive approach. And I just want to make one comment, or should I say my comments?
No, you know, let's just, let's just wrap up every councillor when we get to them, so make your comments.
Okay. So again, as I mentioned, this is a very good start, and I like to call it the straw dog. But the groups that are involved, the staff members that are involved, I think it's important that we reiterate over the next few days, maybe face-to-face, about what you just said, Mr. Horstman, because I believe that some staff are nervous, especially around Christmas time, that this means that potentially their job's going to be lost. And I think, if I may suggest, that the city, city hall leaders may want to take a moment and just go down and visit with them and just make sure they understand, along with the leaders of the EDC and the Innovation Centre, that this is a starting point to something that is going to be allowing everybody to contribute. Your thoughts? Thank you.
Okay, so we have, did you want to comment to that, Mr. Horstman?
Please, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, again, for clarity, the, even the report itself has said there's some very good things that are going on right now within the municipality from an economic development point of view, but there are some opportunities that are looked at, too, and that's been recognized by the report. We have had face-to-face with the board chairs and with the executive, but certainly[1799.08] we'll make sure and endeavor to have that conversation go, reach out even further into those organizations, because we are equally aware of some of the angst that we would like to dissipate. Is, this is a collaborative effort, and we're making sure that we do the right thing that's for the community as a whole in terms of investment in economic development. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Counselor Nero next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that explanation of the resolution that we, the meaning of the resolution that we would be passing tonight. Thanks for our conversation before the meeting and your clarification just a few minutes ago. I certainly was not prepared to pass this resolution or at least vote for this resolution the way it was written in my understanding of it. Most of my questions have been answered by your explanation and some of the questions that preceded me, but I do have one. If, I guess I'll, I'll address this to Mr. Vare. If, if my biggest issue, and let alone the fact that I did support the review being done on the EDC and Innovation Center, but if my biggest issue was the MOU that I wanted to relook at and not consider hypothetically the collapse of both these corporations into one, we have two ways to do that. Amend it at any time by mutual consent or terminate by either party upon one year's written notice. Are we at the point of recommending termination by written notice because we couldn't get mutual consent to look at the MOU? Were we there at that point at any time during these discussions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. We really haven't started those discussions with the two organizations. We've had, you know, early dialogue, I would call it. Really, the necessity in terms of terminating the MOU is to have the city in a position where it can make changes, if that's what comes back from our discussion and if that's what staff recommends.
Now, when we have these discussions on the MOU, if there are changes that the city would like to see in the MOU, do those changes have to be agreed to mutually by the corporations? Or can they be something that this is the way we would like this corporation to function?
I'm happy to speak to that, but I mean, the city solicitor, so, look, this is, as it currently stands, we have an MOU. So if we want to change that MOU, unless we get consent to change that MOU, we can't change it. If the, we have noticed that we're going to terminate the MOU, you have much more leverage in your ability to change the MOU if you are looking to change the MOU. So the termination of the MOU just puts the city in the position, as Mr. Vare said, that if we want to change the MOU, and I think when you read the report that came from Mr. Dickerson's firm, one of the things that's clear is there's a lot of room for improvement in our MOU for the benefit of both agencies. So the city would be in a much more effective position or better position to make changes to the MOU that the city was looking to make, whether it was metrics or whether it was accountabilities or whether it was being very specific about what we're looking for from the relationship and what we expect and what they're looking for from us. Whatever our changes are, it will be much easier for the city to make those changes if we're in a position to make those changes. So you could spend, and this would be the concern, three or four months talking about things, not come to any agreement, but then we're into the 2018 year because of the nature of the, the length of time that you have to give notice. So the, as New, the city solicitor says, you can't roll back the clock, right? So starting the clock doesn't mean that, you know, the clock's going to run out. You, you just start it so that if you can't negotiate the, the changes that you want to see, you're in a position to say, well, this is how we're going to move forward.
And, and just by your explanation, I think you understand that now. Really, the discussion's, what you just explained, has nothing to do really with collapsing into one unit or not.
No.
But it does start that clock, and Chase, at the end of the day, we can't come to an agreement, and as councils wish to say, you know what, we need to have one group, one corporation.
Or we can't collapse them, right? Because they're, they're separate independent boards. So if there's no collaboration, there's, there's no interest to collapse them. Counsel could say, oh, this is what we expect from you and you, and this is how we're looking for you to work together, because we would have to re-enter into MOUs. So it doesn't preclude the collapse of them, but it doesn't presuppose the collapse of them either.
And I think that's the point that I wanted to bring out, that we can't, by voting on anything tonight, collapse these two corporations.
We are not doing that.
Okay.
Okay, is that it, Counselor Nero?
That's it.
Counselor Butler, you can start on your comments or questions.
Yeah, whatever. Certainly, I had every intention of saying we should table this resolution that's before us or defer it in the old terminology, and I'm still of that mind, because I think by the audience here, we all anticipated this was the end. It's all over. I anticipated that. I prepared for that. The MOU is finished, so I guess the groups are, yeah, we're going to go with the consultants' report. So I went through this, it's a wordy, difficult, convoluted report, and I guess I can understand that. My question, I have many, many questions and many comments, but many of them, some of them have been answered. I was told that, first of all, the group were going to say, we're going to dialogue, dialogue, dialogue after the fact, it would appear. A lot of water has gone under the bridge, and it was told, we put a lot of documentation before the consultant, and it was indicated to us that we would discuss this before the report was tabled. That, to my understanding, that was not done. Is that correct? And if it wasn't done, why wasn't it?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butler. To be clear, the terms of reference for the work that was undertaken through the RFP was developed with the EDC and the Innovation Center being part of that team, the city being the third part of that team. So the framework under which this whole review was conducted was done with the significant input of both those organizations. In terms of the report that was ultimately undertaken with the successful vendor from the RFP process, there was considerable interaction with the various players through interviews, through workshops, as was identified by Mr. Dickerson earlier on in his presentation, that informed the, the ultimate recommendations that came from this work. And when the final report hit the city in terms of, from MDB Insights, which was on December 1st, late in the evening, so I would say more like December 2nd, there was, the staff nonetheless endeavored to meet with the senior officials and chairs of both organizations to speak to it in a large, in a sort of a broad basis, because we didn't want to have the report in the hands of others prior to it being in the hands of council, because it's council that had requested the report. And that was done and conducted on December, on December 1st or 2nd, when we first got that final report. So it was right on the same, on the same time. So there was significant interaction input that was provided within this.
Counselor Butler, if I can just ask Brock to, to walk through the consultative process, because particularly at the, the one event you did in here in City Hall, I just sat in and watched for a bit, I didn't participate in it, but I think you'll be reassured that it was pretty extensive.
And through you, your worship, yeah. I think we, we felt that we had built in a number of sort of outreach activities as part of the research process, so that included a number of sort of one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders in the process, both from the two organizations that we were looking at and from those who have, who are familiar with the EDF, but also from other economic development or economic development related organizations across the community, provincial and federal agencies, not-for-profits, business-serving organizations. We also spent some time with staff from both organizations. We did a number of site visits to kind of visit the, and tour the facilities that they were operating. And then in addition, held a workshop that was facilitated by the Queens Executive Decision Center out of the Business School at Queens University. They brought in a series of laptops with what they call group decision support software to engage in a kind of a facilitated exercise to explore some of these issues. We're always very conscious of the fact that when we do the consultations, of course, there's, there is never a kind of a unitary view that emerges from that. And so many of the ideas that we've brought, we've brought forward in the report do have their roots in or are grounded in those consultations, but I don't think the report as it stands represents a kind of a unanimous view of any of these particular issues. What we've tried to do is to draw ideas, insights, and information from those range of contributors and participants to make a series of suggestions. And in fact, we think that the suggestions that emerge, while they're fairly wide-ranging, include a number of things that stand on their own, and so that they don't stand as an entire package where it's a do-all-or-do-none kind of thing. So for example, this notion of a consolidation of structures, whatever decision is ultimately made does not impact the ability or the interest in sort of renegotiating the MOUs or reconsidering the way in which the EDF functions. And so I think what we've tried to do out of that range of consultations is to pick up on a series of ideas or themes that will help to move the economic development agenda in the community forward. And we've suggested a suite of those recommendations that we think works well together, but many of those can also stand in isolation as potential improvements to the structure and process that exists in the community from a perspective of monitoring and ensuring impacts from your investments.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Butler.
My question was, rephrase it. When the final report was finished, did, was there a meeting of the EDC, SMIC, and the consultant and staff before, because it's all about them? Was there a meeting once the table, the report was tabled?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butler, there was a meeting regarding the report that came forward on December 1st, and there was copies of the reports provided to both organizations when we had them immediately after counsel received their copies of the report.
So it was given to them, but there was no dialogue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butler, we had dialogue with them, and it was also provided to them. The dialogue centered around just what we've discussed here in terms of the companion report that staff's brought forward, that we're looking forward to a collaborative effort in terms of how we're going to bring, bring these things to bear going forward, these things being the MDB Insights recommendations, how we're going to have that and bring them, bring them forward.
Okay. So again, certainly my understanding of what is before us is, is being clarified. I don't know if that's been communicated all that well. So the whole idea here is we have a report before us, but we can tweak it a whole lot or a little bit, but absolutely no decision has been made, is being brought before us this evening.
That's right.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butler, that is correct. We are, we have, are seeking counsel to receive the report that was provided by the consultants and to refer it to staff for, for collaborative dialogue, a detailed collaborative dialogue with the two partners in terms of what this means going forward. To be able to accomplish that, we had to provide the notice of termination to start the clock so that we can be ready to make whatever amendments, if any, to, to the MOUs with what's landed upon.
Okay. To the consultant, we mentioned a whole host of cities, Ottawa, Sudbury, Hamilton, Buffalo, Kamloops, Pittsburgh, Thunder Bay, Waterloo. The purpose of putting those in the report, are we to draw out of each of the cities? Is there one better than the other best practices? And how do we, how does, how do we stack up against them?
And through you, your worship, to Counselor Butler, I think that what we tried to do with the reference to other communities is to really kind of learn from the way that other communities have addressed some of these issues or tackled some of these challenges. So on the question of memoranda of understanding to help sort of define the agreements between cities and arms-length economic development corporations, we've seen a great deal of practice in the province that's changed over the last year or two. And we've seen, for example, new MOU structures emerge from the city of London, from Waterloo region, from the city of Kingston. And so what we've really tried to do is to kind of learn from the experience of those other communities who have been assessing these kinds of questions and to bring that knowledge into the context of what we've provided back to you. In some instances, the things that are being done in other communities will be relevant. In other instances, what happens in Ottawa or what happens in London or something may not be that directly applicable to Sault Ste. Marie. Communities are very different, and their economic development opportunities are different. What we've tried to do is sort of provide examples where communities have successfully engaged with some of these issues and derive some specific lessons from that activity. We do a number of these kinds of reviews and organizational assessments across the country and indeed across North America. As I said at the outset, I think we were impressed with the range and scope of economic development activities that are underway in this community and with the impact that many of those activities are having. So we have been into many communities where there are significant and severe challenges on the economic development front, and I don't think you're in that spot. I think what you're really considering, what makes sense, is, is how, how best to utilize the resources you have available and whether there's, there's more that can be achieved in the future by thinking differently about the way in which you allocate your dollars and the way in which you engage with your economic development structures. And so we really tried to position this piece of work in the context of what are the next steps? Where do we go from here? What new opportunities can we identify and open up by virtue of rethinking some of those technical arrangements that are already in place?
Thank you for that. And I think a host, a whole host of other questions I have will probably come in January or February, and I'm sure they will be dealt with by the EDC and SMIC and the city alike. Two organizations can apply for funding, and probably they can access more funding by having two rather than collapsing into one. Some people are on contract for three years, I believe, with the Innovation Center. So if we have to, in the, in the area of efficiency, we have to have less staff, that's often the case. What about severance packages? Are the two incubators probably should come together? That would make some sense, some synergy there. Well, it depends, where's the physical space? What's that going to cost? The cost of moving? And are they, there are some similarities, but there are differences. Those are all the specifics, but I guess we don't need to have those addressed at this point in time. That's coming in January, as Counselor Myers has indicated. January, I don't know how you can get a report back in January, other than start the discussions in January, maybe. And certainly, I would hope that a counselor or two could be privy, not privy, but part of those discussions, because the buck eventually will stop here. So to Mr. Vare, is that rushing the issue to say, the staff, I guess, is going to be, bring back a report in January?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butler, I think the intent is, it could be that not all the fine details are settled and brought back to counsel in January. More, it gives us an opportunity to talk with the two organizations and come back with a timeline and the initial feedback we're getting from those two organizations that will inform this report. And so, you know, really, as I look at it, the report that is in front of us from MDB Insight, you know, this was commissioned by a resolution of council that wanted a review of its investments in economic development. We have that report, we have the feedback and the recommendations from the consultant, and now we need to have those detailed conversations with the two organizations and come back to counsel with a plan.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we have Counselor Romano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my first question is actually, if we could have Mr. Dodds and Mr. Butler come up, the CEOs of the both, of this Innovation Center and EDC.
Perhaps for both gentlemen, I'm having a hard time with, with this right now with respect to what level of communication has been had with you both and/or together with respect to this plan. Can you guys help me out with that?
Well, I took over as the acting ED on October 11th, and so most of this work was done before.
Yeah, I think you have to put Tom Bear, I think you have to put Tom Bear in this.
Well, specifically to the December 6th report or the December 1st reference from...
Go ahead.
Short answer, December 4th, 1st, shortly thereafter, whenever we got it, we had a very short meeting with Al Horstman, Don, myself, and our two representatives from with Al Horstman, Don, myself and our two representatives from the Innovation Center and, and Robert Reed, my chair, and that was to cover off the four recommendations. And that was a verbal description of what they were. In terms of receiving anything in hard copy or any dialogue, well, we haven't had any dialogue about it. We received the report, I think, shortly after you guys did. So that was the first time we saw it. So that would be, yeah, Thursday.
Okay. So there, there hasn't been any actual dialogue either A, between the two sides or B, in terms of implementation of this plan as it's noted in the report?
That's the point of the resolution, Councilor Mano. It's the first part of the resolution is to tell staff, we commissioned this report. So staff wanted to bring it to us to get our direction on it. So like the first part of the resolution is to tell the CEO, Mr. Vare, to sit down with these gentlemen and work on this.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I do. Are there any concerns with respect to if we were to proceed with this resolution as is? Do you gentlemen have concerns about potentially either any A, funding sources or B, projects that are currently underway that could potentially be compromised if the memorandums of understanding were terminated today?
Well, I think that research needs to be done to be certain that those, that funding is, continues to be available. That is referenced in the report.
And Mr. Dodds?
We've had one, we have one project or program that we run, which is Starter Company. And that Starter Company runs on a provincial fiscal year, which ends March 31st, 2018. So if we have notice of termination, see, this is the key piece of the puzzle. I mean, I think it's a matter of timing and to go back to Don's point, you know, we haven't looked at the details, but Starter Company is certainly one that has brought to our attention what's happening for that last three months because you're making a commitment for that period of time.
Couple of points here. One, Councilor Mano, I'm a little taken aback. We're actually, you've called the other parties to a contract to answer questions, really about whether a contract should be kind of terminated. Now, like their funding for 2017 is set. Their, their operations for 2017 don't change. And like this is for us to decision, decide as a party to a contract. It, it's really awkward to have the other side of a contract to start, you know, a public discussion on whether or not the contract should be terminated.
No, that's, I think it's a fair question because what I'm asking is specific to two parts of the resolution with respect to what potentially may be affected, if anything, if this were to go ahead. I'm not asking anybody for their opinion on whether we should move forward or not.
Yeah, but this, but this is our...
I haven't asked for an opinion.
Yeah, but this, this is, this was done for our purposes to see how we fund our economic development, right?
No, I'm well aware of that. That's, that's obvious. I, I voted on the resolution back in March to look for this report, so...
We, we've set our funding for 2017. These operations...
I'm not asking any further questions of them if that means we can move on.
Yeah, well, that would be appreciated.
So, sorry, gentlemen, I'm good now. Now, as far as just comments, yeah, thank you, gentlemen. My comments, probably can go on for a while, but obviously I don't want to do that. Well, maybe I wouldn't mind, but I'm sure everyone else doesn't want to listen to me. The, the difficulty I have with this, I have no problem with part one of the, of the resolution. I have, I have concerns with the second aspects, second and third being termination of the two MOUs. To get the parties under the first part to sit down together, that being the EDC and the Innovation Center, their respective officers, boards, to sit down at a table together and, and look at potential efficiencies and so on and so forth, I have no difficulty with that. I, I have a bit of a concern when I hear, you know, you go back to the resolution we passed, I think it was March 7th, memory research incorrect, was to look at best practices with respect to these two organizations. It seems a little strange to me that in looking at best practices, these two sides have not yet ever been met with to sort of look at something on a together basis as to how can we create efficiencies? Could we amalgamate? Could we do some of these things?
A lot of that's happened, Councilor Mano.
Well, I sit on one of the boards and I certainly don't ever recall being confronted with respect to that. But based on just the, what I heard from both gentlemen right now, there hasn't been a real opportunity for any kind of, and I can appreciate we needed a resolution to create that opportunity for dialogue between the two sides. That's why I support that aspect of the resolution. I think it would be great for the two parties to sit down together, and by parties I should say the two agencies, to sit down together in a room and see if there's any desire to get to the second part. And in your own words, Mr. Mayor, earlier on, in terms of the memorandums of understanding, if there's a consent, we don't need to worry about giving notice 12 months in advance. So if the two parties or agencies are content to work together towards an amalgamation, then why would we want to terminate the memorandums of understanding and potentially compromise either A, government funding or other sources of funding, or B, any of the projects that are underway? My fear is, is this, if I'm an investor looking at Sault Ste. Marie and I've been working with either of the two organizations and I suddenly find out that the memorandum of understandings have been terminated as between the city and that group, I'm afraid, as an investor, I would be a little bit worried. I would, I would have some reservations about continuing on my discussions or my, my investment. So I would just like to start with part one. Why don't we just let them sit down and, I'm all for the idea. I think when we looked at this resolution back in March, you have two economic development agencies in this community. It, it's a very sensible position to look at, there's probably some efficiencies if they work together. That seems obvious and it's, it just should be looked at. I don't know why the two parties can't sit down and look at it without terminating the memorandums of understanding. I just don't know why we need all three, is all I'm getting at. I'm happy with doing part one, but until I'm satisfied that other people aren't going to sort of get scared away by this, and I'm not hearing anything here today that would change my opinion on that, I, I, I'm not content with this in this fashion. I like part one. Part two and three, I don't see where the, the urgency is in, in moving forward on those two secondary parts in terms of termination of the memorandum of understanding. I just, I don't see why that's necessary at this time.
Councilor Christian?
I was going to say that all of my questions were answered. But I want to pick up on that, just to be clear.
Sure, yeah.
I was trying to muddy the waters.
I was going to speak to that, but you're welcome to.
My question in a very simplistic way is, if we serve notice, does it put any provincial, potential funding at risk during the notice period?
It's a 12-month notice period.
Right.
So we still have a valid memorandum of understanding.
So does that affect...
Our, our understanding is it doesn't, but I, I can't speak to that definitively. Who can?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Our understanding from our discussions with outside parties that there's not going to be impact, we can't say definitively that there won't be some impact in terms of it, but that impact could be positive or negative because you also have those outside interests, those investors that are saying they can't work with the community as it's currently structured. If it is, you're anticipating having a different structure, maybe I would be interested in, in coming in. So that's why it's a one-year notice period. The issue is that it's just putting it on notice. It's not saying terminating tomorrow. It's saying put it on notice so the clock starts running to be able to have, start the conversations, to start coming and landing on how this is going to be looking.
Okay. Thank you. And with all due respect to that last comment, that's, that is anecdotal and I, and I appreciate what you're saying, but from a practical point of view, I'm, I, it would be nice to have a definitive answer, yes, that it will not affect potential funding, but it's, okay, so I have to deal with that. The one question I do have for the consultant, if I might, through you, Mr. Mayor, is I read the document, the, the both reports twice. I gave up my Sunday football game, by the way, to, to do that. And because it's important. But could you speak specifically to Sudbury and Thunder Bay's structure? What are they, I know there's a lot of information there. I'm hoping that you can pretty much encapsulate. I read it, but I want to be clear on, on what their structure is and what their going forward is.
So I, through you, your worship, to Councilor Christian, I, I think one of the things I commented on earlier was the, the fact that economic development ecosystems are often complex and part of that complexity is that every community has this broad range of players that take on different responsibilities in that space. And so when we look at a community like Sault Ste. Marie and then compare it to Sudbury or to Thunder Bay, what we see is often very different kinds of structures in terms of how they roll out on the ground. There are some similarities in Sudbury, for example, it's an arms-length corporation, portions of its operation are housed at City Hall, it contains the Small Business Enterprise Center, it covers both economic development and tourism activities, for example. So there are lots of similarities. But at the same time, economic development organizations often take on different functions that are unique to the communities that they operate in. And so, for example, we see here in Sault Ste. Marie, the notion of the EDF as a core part of the economic development operation. In, in Sudbury, we often see sort of cultural activities, for example, falling under the umbrella of their economic development operation. And so there are these kind of additional assignments or interests that kind of get to, that broaden the scope of what economic development departments do over time. I think broadly speaking, you're probably more similar in structure to what's happening in Sudbury at the moment, where there are sort of close connections between the economic development operation and NORCAT, the Innovation Center in their case, where the tourism component of activities is kind of under, underneath the economic development umbrella and, and where there are sort of close collaborations with post-secondary institutions and a range of kind of other municipal departments. Thunder Bay, again, has some similarities, was probably a little bit different in the sense that the, the operations there are probably broken up into more players and more pieces. I will say that one of the things that makes this community very unique in terms of how it just stacks up against others, and this comes back to, to Councilor Butland's questions about best practices, when we look at, at an operation like the Community Geomatic Center here, which represents a substantially different kind of operation, and I think something that really does stand out as unique to this community, uniquely positive for this community and a real asset in terms of how you continue to build economic development opportunities moving forward. I don't think in either Thunder Bay or in Sudbury that they have that kind of an asset or that kind of a revenue center that sort of sits at the heart of some of their economic development operations that really both supports many of their existing activities but has the potential to kind of grow support for more activities in the future. I think what we've tried to do in the report is, is kind of look at communities like Thunder Bay, like Sudbury, like Ottawa, we looked at Grand Rapids, Michigan, a whole host of places to sort of say, we cannot directly compare this community to any one of those other places, but in many of those communities, there are individual ideas or approaches that we think are good as part of the mix of things that Sault Ste. Marie can be looking at here.
Okay. Well, to follow up with that then, let me pose a question in a different light. Does, does Thunder Bay and Sudbury, again, I've read it and I apologize, I was trying to make sense of it, do Thunder Bay and Sudbury have separate economic development corporations and innovation-type centers?
Through you, your worship, yes. What we see across the province is that with the exception of Ottawa, the regional innovation centers, of which Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center is one, are separate structures from the economic development organizations. So Ottawa is the only case in Ontario where they've been amalgamated. In all other communities, they're separate structures. So in Thunder Bay and Sudbury, they are arm, they're sort of two different organizations. We do see high levels of collaboration between the two in certain communities. I think some, some examples like Niagara, Innovate Niagara and Niagara Regions Economic Development are very closely tied together, although they still sit as two separate organizations. And we would expect that over the next few years, we probably will see some amalgamations of regional innovation centers and economic development operations. But to, to date, the only community that has done that is Ottawa. Part of the reason we see more of that happening is that the province has an agenda moving forward to try to create more regional economic development structures. And so there will be additional funding on the table, we expect in the next few years for regional economic development organizations. And then if we already have regional innovation organizations and regional tourism organizations, there may be some pressure to start to look at ways in which some of these structures can be pulled together. That, how that rolls out remains to be seen, but we think that there will be sort of higher levels of consolidation and collaboration.
I hate to, you, you mentioned regional. How would you classify Sault Ste. Marie? I don't see us as a region per se. I, I see us as a sort of standalone, isolated community. So that last comment, would that affect our situation here in Sault Ste. Marie? Your best guess, I know it's speculative.
Through your, through your worship, Councilor, I, it is speculative. I think it will probably impact you less directly than other places, but to a certain extent, some of your programs are already regional. If you look at the operations of the Small Business Enterprise Center within the EDC, it does not provide services only to residents of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, but across the broader Algoa region. So there is this sense that some of those programs already spill out past municipal boundaries and municipal borders as a way of kind of offering a service at a regional level rather than strictly at a municipal level.
Okay. Well, I, I too, is like Counselor Nero, when I first read the resolution, I'm saying that wait, let's step back a minute. We're moving too quickly. And I still have some hesitation, but I understand the, I have a better understanding and appreciation for the resolution and recommendation, the way it's written. I mean, I, I'm all for looking for improvements. I do have a concern, as Counselor Butland pointed out, I'm not quite sure that given the potential impact that this could have on the two organizations, that the organizations have had an opportunity to really respond to this as a courtesy more than anything before it came to council. So that's, that's one concern I have. I'm all for trying to look for improvements. I've always said that I'd like better performance indicators. I, I believe that I'm one of the best cheerleaders when it comes to economic development, but I have a hard time sometimes being able to preach that because the information we get is at times vague, protected information. And I, and I do agree with the report that we need much more specific information that we as counselors could speak to, defend, and that the community at large can understand. I, I, you know, I, I don't think, there's a wide range of opportunities here, whether we bring them under one roof or not. I do want to make this point though, I'm not an expert in the area and we're dealing with people's lives here. And I don't want to, I don't want to predetermine that this is a bad idea because we're dealing with potentially combining. And I don't want to say it's a good idea because I, that it's a great idea on its, by, by merging. I'm just not an expert at it. So I really do think it's important that the two groups get together, very, very much so. The one experience, that the, the experience I have is when you try to merge or bring two organizations together, if it's not done properly, you're going to have long-lasting and far-reaching problems. I've lived through it. And so whatever we decide to do, I think it's very, very important that the stakeholders have a say and that they're part of the transition going forward. Because short of that, even if we think that we've got the best structure in place, there's animosity, competition, et cetera, that, that resides in the new organization or the, the two organizations under a, one roof, whatever it is, we're going to be taking a step backwards. So please, we need input from both groups. And the report that comes forward in January, I want a, a level of comfort that they have had an opportunity beyond the staff report to be part of the report. I want to hear from the stakeholders. It's too important, we're only going to get one kick at this. As I say, I'm not, I'm not predispositioned to anything. I think it's good to look at this. I think some changes have to be made based on what was said, but I certainly am not going to say we need to cut jobs and merge into one. I just want a good, healthy dialogue so that everybody's part of the solution. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Campadich?
Thank you, Mayor. I also read over the report yesterday and I was trying to watch Jacob, the Jacobs win yesterday as well as reading over the report, and I'm glad that they were very successful. So to the consultant, you had mentioned that Ottawa now is an amalgamated between the two and other areas have two separate entities. And I just wanted to know in your opinion, what's the best bang for the taxpayer's dollar? An amalgamated or two separate?
Through you, your worship, I, I guess there's not necessarily a yes or a one or the other sort of approach to that. I think as we looked at the situation here, we felt there were some opportunities that, that began to exist because of the coming together. So we've seen best practices in communities like Waterloo that suggest kind of having a common administrative structure around all of your incubator programs, for example, can create really interesting synergies and can help to make those programs even more successful and to grow more rapidly. When we looked at Ottawa, we were seeing some signs of success with, with their initiatives in terms of tying economic development and the innovation programs together. in terms of tying economic development and the innovation programs together. And so when we looked at those contexts, we did see that there in some instances were value to driving things forward, but that was not in and of itself what prompted us to that conclusion. We've recently done some work in Kingston, for example, where we recommended dividing up some of the economic development structures there as a way of kind of spurming this activity that we felt was appropriate to that community. Part of what we looked at in this case was the sense that there is a kind of a perceived sense of complexity to the economic development ecosystem within the community. A lot of times, there's confusion amongst businesses, amongst potential investors about where to go for the kinds of services they're looking for and how these different programs overlap. That happens to some extent in all communities. We felt there was a real opportunity here to declutter some of that landscape, to sort of achieve higher levels of coordination in terms of some of those activities, and to ensure that programs on one side of the economic development ecosystem were well-aligned with those on the other side, and to do that through sort of closer coordination of staff and more dialogue on a day-to-day basis. And we felt that one sort of reasonable mechanism is to bring everything together under one roof.
Just to follow up, and it's regarding jobs and Counselor Christian had mentioned about, so under an amalgamated two units, is there in fact, or has there been in fact job loss in Ottawa when the two entities came together?
Through you, your worship. I actually can't speak specifically to job numbers in the Ottawa context, and we'd be happy to take a look at that, share some information back. I think there has been research to suggest that at a municipal level, amalgamation has not resulted in job losses. So amalgamation, consolidation does not automatically equal job cuts. And one of the things we were very careful to say, or to not say it, I guess, in context of our report, was to say that although we see efficiencies and synergies, we didn't necessarily translate them into elimination of jobs. There would be the opportunity to potentially change some roles. So if you have two organizations becoming one, you don't necessarily need two separate sets of books. You have one set of books on the financial side that may be much larger, but some of the time that had previously been dedicated towards maintaining separate sort of financial structures, for example, could be reoriented within the organization with different kinds of activities. And so we do not sort of specifically advocate the elimination of roles, but the sense that if we think of those roles as capacity within the organization, the dollars, the hours associated with some of those roles could be reoriented to allow new activities to take place and to sort of encourage the organization to kind of think of new ways of utilizing some of those existing resources.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Has every councillor got Counselor Fatah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just ask what the cost of the study was? Just to remind everyone what the cost of the study was?
The CAO can answer that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. It was less than $75,000.
Seventy-five thousand. I'd like to just throw something at you and just get your response on the, regarding the EDF. If I were to say to you that the city of Sault Ste Marie creates a positive environment, like for development, by that I mean low taxes for the commercial industrial, you know, plenty of land, infrastructure ready to go, and enable a ready workforce, and leave the funding to the upper levels of government, why can't the EDF fund be zero?
I think the question is, why can't the, because the EDF fund can be zero. I think the question to him is, should the EDF be zero?
Yeah, that's the question.
Yeah, that's the question. Should we have no EDF, Mr. Dickinson?
Through you, your worship. The EDF is an interesting tool in the sense that it is something that most communities do not have in place. There are limited pools of similar funds that exist in some other communities, but I think this really jumped out at us as something that Sault Ste Marie does that is relatively unusual in terms of municipal economic development practice. And because of that, it kind of stands out as an interesting tool for engaging folks that are in the economic development space, to provide something that differentiates your community from others, for potential investors, for existing companies that are struggling with retention issues or expansion opportunities, for community-based initiatives that may have positive economic development impacts but are struggling to kind of find the resources to make them happen, sort of thing. So I think it represents a kind of a tool that you have at your disposal that most communities don't. And I think as a result, it does give you a wider array of economic development opportunities. As I say, I don't think you would stand out if you took it to zero, and certainly that's what most municipalities have chosen to do, but the fact that you've got that resource really puts you in an interesting space.
This is, again, maybe for Tom Dodds and maybe Tom Verre, but does the MOU preclude any opportunity in the past to have discussions about ways to be more efficient? Because I think the key word through all this exercise, Mr. Mayor, is the word merger. Because I think people have heard the word redundancy, incubators in three or four locations. There's, anybody, like laypeople like ourselves, we think of what's going on here, and I think that the rain was on the wall. I mean, we knew that the word merger was eventually going to come, it just took a little longer than I thought it would. But was, is it in your MOU curtail you from having any kind of conversation in the past? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, like, was there ever any discussion where efficiencies, ways of operating together, ever discussed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Fatah. No, there's nothing in the MOU that would preclude that discussion from having, happening. And in fact, in the past, there's been resolutions to look at opportunities for efficiencies from council, and the Innovation Centre and the EDC have had conversations in the past.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, all of us saw the numbers, but when we see the, just recent numbers for the EDC, from 1.4 million to 1.674 million, you know, as responsible individuals on this council, I think it would behoove us to not pursue this further and certainly see where it takes us. But I think it's important that us, as, just like Counselor Christian did allude to, is that we're not the experts here to say, well, the two can work together, but in fact, they're very separate entities. We all know that. But we're trying to say here, well, it seems to me, just from a general point of view, that it would be a good idea. The rent issue, the incubators all under one roof, and so on and so on. So it would seem that we are on a topic that all of us can agree on, that it is a good idea to pursue it further, where it takes us, you know, we'll certainly see. But I think that this conversation has to be had. And again, from a layperson's point of view, I mean, when I think of words like streamlining, redundancy, duplication, the word merger sounds like a good idea, and I think that that's the way we have to approach this. We'll hear the experts tell us that the Innovation Centre, they're two different kettle of fish. I mean, they have two different philosophies, two different points of view, but my thinking here right now is that a merger, if this is what it eventually comes down to, I think a merger or that direction is something that I'm going to certainly be open to. So I'm going to be voting for this resolution. I think we should carry this forward in a responsible fashion.
Okay, so everybody who's wanted to speak to this has had the opportunity to speak to this? Is that fair to say?
No.
Okay, do you want to speak to it? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Turco. I'm trying to make sure everybody's got an opportunity to speak, so.
Be short and sweet there, Mr. Mayor. One final question, maybe, from Mr. Dickinson. I was here, I believe, as some of us were in 2008. I don't know if you were here, Mr. Dickinson. Have you read the report from 2008, sir?
Yes, so MBB Insight is the successor firm to Milliard Dickinson Blay, which was the firm that carried out the 2008 review. The team, I was not involved in the 2008 review, and the team that carried out this review was a completely different team in terms of personnel and support. We did talk to some of those who had been involved in the 2008 review, but I think we were quick to kind of notice that there were two different objectives in those reviews. So the 2008 review was very much a review of the EDC and its operations and trying to understand whether it had generated the specific impacts around things like job creation or that, that were sort of expected of the operation at the time. This review was focused as a review of investments and understanding the optimal path forward for the city in terms of understanding how to maximize the impact of its dollars as a thought about how to use them in the future. And so we certainly did spend a lot of time with the previous report. It was led by one of my business partners, Paul Blay, at the time. We spoke with him and other members of the team to make sure we understood where it was, but we recognized that there were two different functions and goals of those processes.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, one follow-up question, then. Did you take a different route then than your predecessors in coming up with some of the comments and results that you have brought to our attention tonight?
Through you, your worship. Yes, I think this study goes in a couple of different directions. One is predicated on the fact that this looked at more than the single organization that the 2008 review examined. So we were looking at the EDF and at the Innovation Corporation and that broader ecosystem and not just the Economic Development Corporation. So that sort of took us in a very different direction. I think as well, because this was a review of investments, it led us much more directly into questions around things like the structure of the MOUs that govern your relationship with these organizations, and to exploring, over the course of the last seven or eight or nine years, what has changed in terms of best practice amongst municipalities, in terms of how they structure and position these MOUs. And what we've seen is a lot of change in the last few years in that space, and so we were able to bring some of that knowledge to the table in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any other comments or questions for those who, Counselor, yeah, if you haven't already made comments, because people had questions and then made their comments, so like if you haven't already made your comments, then you can have a comment. Counselor Myers, you didn't make a comment. Yeah, so go ahead and make your comments.
Okay, I will be brief. Bottom line is, for myself, I've lived through a version of this. I was 14 years of staff, was on the board for six-plus years, just went off earlier this year. In 1992, we did a restructuring with the tourism organization at the time called Hatz and the then EDC, and formed the new EDC that exists today. Quite frankly, the difference, and I've heard it said a few times by councillors tonight, so I really want to hammer at this point. City Council commissioned this report. This is our report that we asked for. It is not appropriate at all that we would be sharing that report with the EDC and seeking their, or the Innovation Centre and seeking their input and their comments prior to it coming here tonight. If EDC's board or Innovation Board had commissioned the report, they wouldn't be giving it to us for all of our comments before their own staff and board dealt with it. So I really want to be clear on that. We commissioned this report. It's appropriate, the process that we're following, and I appreciate staff and what they've done. I also think it's very clear that, and I asked that, well, I guess it's an hour ago now, of Mr. Verret, the outset. This is the first step, and he will be dialoguing with the two entities, as will our CAO, and we will move forward together. This is not a witch hunt. Nobody is out to dissolve anybody or anything. I've lived through this. The whole idea of economic development, it's a changing thing. It is very fluid. I've been in it for, well, I guess, 30 years. So we've seen lots of changes. Please don't be afraid of it. We're here for the taxpayers of Sault Ste Marie, which includes everyone in this room. We are the people who are paying to have our investments in economic development pay off, and that's what this is about. This is not about best practices of these organizations, it's about the best investment for the citizens of Sault Ste Marie. That's what we're here for, and that's what this report was about. So those are the comments I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor. As I said, this is near and dear to me. I've been living it since we moved back there in 1989, and I really believe that it changes. I've watched, I was the one that chaired the committee in 2008 and brought the resolution forward, asking for the review then. That was just about a model for economic development. That's not what this is. This is asking for, how do we do the best economic development investment in this community to move forward and create jobs and, you know, create new assessment and all the rest of it? So thank you, Mr. Mayor, those are my comments.
Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, if we, there was some discussion earlier about whether this puts in jeopardy funding opportunities or something like that. If that's a crutch that people are using to oppose this, we'll never change the structure of either our organization. So it's good that we look at these. I'm confident that staff is going to consult with both agencies, and I look forward to hearing from everybody when they come back.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Just to wrap this up, again, this is a really good start. I'm glad, as Mayo's councillor said, that both agencies are going to be consultant, consult, and, you know, talking about, you have the tourism aspect in this, which is so important for our city. You have the corporate, the business, innovation, you have all the key components. Excellent. And I'm, again, want to emphasize, who is the end client here? Yes, the taxpayer, but also let's not forget about why we're doing this. We're looking at other two clients, and the other two clients are potential new businesses coming to the city and also existing businesses. And those are other clients that we have to keep in mind as we move forward with this. So again, I look forward to hearing the report in January after you speak to the both groups, including the tourism group, and to emphasize, I know that there could be potentially tweaking done on this, which is wonderful. Thank you.
So I'd like to thank you and your company for your work, and I'd like to just wrap this up with a few thoughts of my own, because I initiated this motion. And we talk a lot about the challenges in the community and the economic challenges that we have, and I think the community looks to us, looks to us to be working on those, looks to us to diversify, and we do that by way of investing in primarily Innovation Centre and the EDC, and then we have our EDF. The goal of this was to make sure that we are doing the best job we can because ultimately it's our responsibility. And I would really kind of dispute the notion that this hasn't been a thorough process. Outside of the fact that we hired a very skilled independent party to go through it, there's been lots of discussions that have gone on, and I think Mr. Verre would agree with me, and I think Mr. Dodds would have to agree with me. There's been a lot of discussions, not only with me and with the CAO, but with other people about our space and how to improve our space. And I know that the executive directors of these two agencies have spent a lot of time together, the former executive director of the Innovation Centre, but the current executive director of the EDC, and I thank them both for that and their hard work. But look, like, this responsibility to make sure we're getting economic development right in our community lies with us. And this motion was written specifically not to presuppose a merger, to presuppose that is going to be the conclusion. Because we have to give staff direction and begin those discussions. Now they can go begin them, and I would agree with Counselor Christian's comment. You can't force two agencies together. If you do, you create a lot of problems. But if we can create the atmosphere, and if everybody agrees it's a good idea, well, they'll go farther down that road. If they don't agree that it's a good idea, well, then staff is going to have to come back to us and give us some advice. But I think that one thing that's indispealed about this, when you read the report that we got, is the MOUs need work. And the MOUs, there's lots and lots of room for improvement in the MOUs, not only from the other side, but from our side, too. We have to take a leadership role and be very clear on what we expect and what metrics we're looking for, and what we think we should receive on behalf of the community in return for our monies. And I've looked at other MOUs, and there are some things from other MOUs that I think would be positive in our MOU. I've raised one with Mr. Dodds. North Bay's MOU has a requirement that if the EDC in North Bay is going to spend over a certain amount of money, they have to come to council, so that council's involved in that decision. And I think that's a positive change. Now, we might very well be able to consult and collaborate and make all these changes, but in the event that there are changes that we want to see as a city, and we don't have that agreement from the Innovation Centre, we don't have that agreement from EDC, we can't make those changes unilaterally. Well, if we give the notice today, we don't potentially put ourselves into 2018 to make those changes. This staff can work with them, with our partners, and then come back to City Council and say, these are some of the changes we want to see, this is, these are the metrics we want to apply. We have some different suggestions on the scorecard we could use. Well, we can make those changes this year if we have broad consensus, but if we don't have broad consensus, we can't require those changes unless we give notice. So I think it is essential that this motion is passed in full. It doesn't work without steps two and steps three of it, and I think we would have a really hard time moving forward if we didn't put our staff in that position where they can come back to us and have the liberty to make those suggestions. But like, look, we all want to work together, and the first part of the motion, which is the most important part, is they have to work collaboratively with the Innovation Centre and the EDC, but this is ultimately our responsibility. Economic development is ultimately, people look to us, and you know the calls you get, and you know what people think. They think that we're supposed to be doing it, and they're not wrong about that. And we have to be much more active in that respect, I would suggest to you, because you know what people in our community? They want to feel like they have opportunity, and we have to do the most we can to make sure we're maximizing the resources we have to give people that feeling that they have opportunity. So like, I commend staff for their work on this. It's just beginning, but we want to get this done in 2017 and have an idea of what it's going to look like on a going-forward basis. And the motion was written in that spirit and for no other intention. But step one- But step one is to work together and collaborate. So I think it's, it's, I hope you receive it in that spirit. I hope our partners receive it in that spirit and I'm confident staff will approach it accordingly. We've been asked for a recorded vote, so if we can have a recorded vote, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Turco.
Against.
Counselor Fatah.
For.
Counselor Christian.
For.
Counselor Krampetic.
For.
Counselor Hoopinen.
For.
Counselor Hollingsworth. Counselor Shoemaker. Counselor Romano.
I am against the second and third aspects of the resolution, but for the first.
So easy, you have to pick one of the two though, Counsel.
I'm against.
Okay.
Counselor Nero. Counselor Bruni has a conflict. Counselor Myers.
For.
Counselor Butler.
Against.
Mayor Provenzano. Motion carries. Under Agenda Item 8.2, City Landfill Site, a motion by Counselors Romano and Shoemaker, whereas the Corporation of the City of Sault Ste. Marie does not presently have a different fee structure for use of the city landfill site. And whereas it would be appropriate for non-residents of Sault Ste. Marie to pay more than Sault Ste. Marie residents to use the landfill site, especially when considering the lifespan of the current landfill site and costs of upgrades in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that staff report to council by February 1, 2017, with respect to potential additional costs of dumping at the landfill by non-residents of Sault Ste. Marie. And further, that staff report to council on a mechanism to ensure that only non-residents of Sault Ste. Marie are required to pay a greater fee for use of the city landfill site.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor Romano, it's your resolution. Do you want to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The resolution, I'll keep it very short and sweet. We've been going for quite a while. Yeah, no, well, then I generally am, right? So the, the point of the resolution, we recall back to budget. This actually stems from comment Counselor Fatah made, so give credit where credit is due. We have a landfill site. We do not charge different prices for everybody out there. And there's a lot of people who are not from the city who are using it, who are taxpayers, who are not taxpayers. We are searching for additional revenue. This is potential additional revenue. It's when we look at efficiencies and we look at trying to generate better ways to, to increase our revenue. This is, in my view, a fairly obvious way to look at things. At the end of the day, there's a lot of people using our landfill site that aren't paying towards our tax base. And it only seems fair that if we can find a mechanism in which to, to know, to be able to monitor that, that we should. And if there is a good way to monitor that, then it only makes sense that those people who are not paying towards the tax base here should have to pay for use of that facility over and above what residents of the city pay. Especially given our budget that we just had go through where we are cutting and still coming up with significant tax increases that, and, and cutting significant services. We need to come up with ways to, to generate additional income and maximize on the returns that we give to our taxpayers. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I'm glad you kept it brief there, Counsel Romano. Seconder, did you want to comment, Counsel Shoemaker?
No, no addition.
Counselor Hoopinen.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Through you, my question is, I thought now that when someone went to the, to the city dump to, to get rid of their garbage, that they had to show ID, that they were from the city. So I'm not sure why we have this, if they're showing the ID already.
All right, I'll get Mr. Girardi to speak on that.
Through Acting Mayor to Counselor Hoopinen. Presently, our environmental assessment does not allow the city to accept garbage from non-residents other than Prince Township and/or Rankin. So you are correct. We, we are not allowed to actually have anyone other than city residents drop their garbage out. And do we check? We might not check every person, but if we suspect someone, we will check.
Okay, thank you very much. I do want to say though, that my husband does use the city dump or did, and he was checked every time. So your staff is doing a good job and I think that would be a good solution if they could keep doing that.
Counselor Butler, thank you.
Yes, very briefly, I can understand why we would want to charge them. But why would, I question to the mover, why would we, how could we justify charging them more to come to the landfill site?
Counsel Romano.
The purpose is to get a report, right? That's what we're after here. So let's look at the pluses and the negatives. In my opinion, if you're not paying towards the tax base, but you're using the facility, our taxes, a fair portion of them go towards the landfill site, its maintenance. And you, you look at one of the biggest expenses we've heard here in the last 12 or so months. Now, I can't remember the last time the matter was before us. We have a major expansion that we have to do at the landfill site that's going to cost many, many millions of dollars. There's a lot of costs that are the burdens of our taxpayers to use that facility. And yes, we all go in there and repay the tipping fee, everything's $10. But if you're not paying the city taxes, it, it seems to stand to reason that you shouldn't be permitted to use the facility at the same expense that it costs everybody else to use it. Now, what would that number be? Would that be reasonable? Will staff come back and say, hey, we don't agree with this? That's great. And then maybe there's a reason why. This is for a staff report to see whether or not maybe other communities do it, something similar. I just, I happen to know, and some of these people will get mad at me for hearing me say this, but I know of some people who live outside of this community. And I've had specific comments made to me saying, you know, I get the best of both worlds. Why would I want to move into city limits and pay city taxes when I'm only paying a couple hundred dollars a year in taxes? But I get to use everything that the city gets to use.
All right, Counsel Romano, you're, you're asking for a report, so we can save some of those comments. When the report comes back.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay, well, I'll allow one more question.
And good work.
Counsel Butler, are you finished? Counselor Bruni, last question.
And maybe a question to Mr. Girardi. Is this a common concern with PWT?
Through Acting Mayor to Counselor Bruni, I don't know if you'd call it a concern, because like I said, we, we presently do check when, when we suspect that a person may be from outside the city. And we do not allow people from outside to use the landfill, mainly for the reasons that they're not part of the AA. And our CAV only has two other organizations, one being Prince and one being Rankin on it. So we couldn't allow them even if we wanted to.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. That's it. All in favor of this report?
Under Agenda Item 8.3, Construction Employer Decision. I've got a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Myers, whereas in the 1980s, the city was certified as a construction employer. And whereas the results of said certification has excluded many local businesses, including unionized business, from bidding on city projects. And whereas a new Ontario Labor Relations Board decision has influenced the legal landscape for institutions being certified as construction employers. Now therefore be it resolved that the city Legal Department and Human Resources Department report to council regarding the implications of the Ontario Labor Relations Board decision and advise what actions, if any, the city of Sault Ste. Marie may take to allow all businesses in Sault Ste. Marie to participate in municipally issued contracts.
Thank you. And Counsel Shoemaker, you move that one?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I don't want this to be construed as an anti-union resolution, because it is not. This certification has affected local businesses, both unionized businesses and non-unionized businesses, who if they're not part of a specific union, are prohibited from bidding on certain municipal contracts. So there was a recent decision out of Essex or somewhere in that general area that, I don't know if you can call it decertified, but got a, a school board out of certification as a construction employer. And I think it's incumbent upon us to see if there is any merit in looking at whether or not that legal decision would have an impact on Sault Ste. Marie's certification as a construction employer, or a, yeah, certification, sorry, as a construction employer. So all, all we're asking for again is a report back from staff. But I guess the hope is that all businesses that are in Sault Ste. Marie, unionized, non-unionized, will have the opportunity to bid on municipally issued contracts.
Any one, okay, one or two questions? Go ahead, Counselor Krampetic.
Yes, I'm, I'm just concerned with the resolution, because I think in fact that it really doesn't belong here at City Council. I think it belongs in the, with the labor relations and discussions with the, with the union itself. I don't think it should be here. I think it should be involved with the human resources and with the, the labor union itself that's involved with it. It's not, this isn't the place for this.
Thank you, Counselor, and it'll come back as a report. All in favor? Deputy City Clerk.
Under Agenda Item 8.4, Black Road Widening Project, a motion by Counselors Christian and Butler, whereas Sault Ste. Marie has 24 kilometers of connecting links roads within its boundaries. And whereas 35% of arterial roads in Sault Ste. Marie are designated as connecting links. And whereas the provincial government does not provide any funding for winter control, line painting, or maintenance of any kind. And whereas the Black Road widening between McNabb Street and Second Line, which is estimated to cost $5.6 million to complete, is ineligible for funding as MTO deems the increased traffic to be locally generated. And whereas Sudbury and Thunder Bay each have a bypass which diverts commercial traffic around their communities. And whereas the Government of Ontario funds all maintenance and repairs for these roads, which local traffic in these communities access on a constant basis. And whereas in 2014, MTO deferred all route planning and environmental assessments for a 17 East, 17 North bypass and the connection of 17 East to Black Road at Second Line for at least 10 years. Now therefore be it resolved that council requests that staff provide an update on any current developments relating to the widening of Black Road and any funding options that would allow for the completion of this work. Further, that staff investigate the possibility of establishing tolls at all entry points to the city where fees can be charged to all large commercial vehicles entering the city, which would help defray the escalating costs of maintaining connecting links roads, which these commercial vehicles damage as a result of continued use.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, we have the mover, Mr. Christian, Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Butler for reluctantly seconding this, this resolution. And I want to make it very clear right off the top, I'm not an advocate for tolls. However, let me say my piece here and this resolution hopefully will make common sense to everybody. First of all, the resolution garnered the effect that I wanted. It's, it's been a topic of discussion in the community. The purpose of the resolution is to draw attention to the problem that we have with traffic flow on our current bypass. If you've traveled that road, if you use that as a commuter, you, you're frustrated by how slow traffic is on it. If you've tried, trying to travel home at night and you get stuck behind a cattle truck, you're frustrated. It, it takes me 27 minutes from one end of town to the other. Now, if you're living in Toronto, that may not seem like much. But I could travel the same distance from the east end to the west end using a different route. That's how backed up the traffic is. If you've witnessed people trying to pass on that two-lane road, you're shocked by some of the attempts they make to get through. Many, many people are complaining that use this route and I've listened to them. And many of them suggested that we need to do something about the fact that the province isn't moving on this. And many have suggested tolling. So that's one of the reasons it's on, it's on the resolution. The province has designated 24 kilometers of road in our city as connecting links. 24 kilometers. By doing this, they're recognizing the importance of those roads in transprovincial traffic and commerce. They need it, all right? And these, these roads are vital, but they're exacting a huge toll on the condition of the roads. They're wearing them down and we're, you know, that costs a lot of money. Now, in fairness to the province, I need to be clear, that when it comes to reconstruction and refurbishing of those roads, the province does contribute and we appreciate that. And I certainly appreciate that. But not that, but notwithstanding that, by the fact that they're willing to reconstruct the road, I think they recognize the importance of that road as part of the highway system. What I don't understand is, why would they fund widening of Great Northern Road between Third and Fourth Line and widening of Black Road between Trunk Road and McNabb? And then turn around and tell us that they can't widen that last piece? It doesn't make sense. Their argument is that it's local traffic. And, and I would concede that. I would concede the fact that the hospital has gone in recently. We've got two super schools. There's a lot of traffic utilizing that road. But there are still transprovincial vehicles that are using that link. So you're slowing them down as well. If you have traffic backups on the highway, whether it's Highway 17 East or Highway 17 North, over the last couple of decades, the province has put in passing lanes. They recognize the bottlenecks. This is still part of the highway. We need to do something about it. In addition, Sudbury, Thunder Bay have their own bypasses that are paid for, but traffic travels through Sault Ste. Marie. I'm simply asking the MTO to take a good, hard look at this and do what I believe is their responsibility and come forward with some funding. Do I think we're going to build tolls? No. Nobody thinks that I'm, I'm proposing that we build tolls. However, the question has come up. And so since we're looking at options in the long run, let's ask staff, along with the report on getting an update on the correspondence that we've had with MTO, any additional facts about transprovincial traffic that is accessing our roads. Let's ask some very high-level, general questions about whether it's even legal for us to consider a toll. And what would something that, like, what, what would that look like? All right? I'm not suggesting we go down that road at all. I'm simply asking for a high-level report that staff can come back with to discuss. Now, some counselors will quickly put their hand up and say, I'm against it. I'm against tolls. And I understand the political reason why they do that. But I'm not suggesting that we're putting tolls in. The question of that been asked of me by constituents and I'm simply asking staff to make a couple of phone calls to see the practicality in it. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor, Counsel Shoemaker. Keep in mind, folks, this is a, asking for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. I, or sorry, Mr. Acting Mayor. I don't support this, as I believe our recent tax increase is enough of a barrier to entry that we don't need to add more locally. And I think that we should be building bridges and not walls. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seriously, I just came back too early. I came back too early. Counsel Bruni.
Mr. Mayor, I definitely won't support this. I mean, we're asking staff to investigate the possibility of establishing tolls at all entry points to the city where fees can be charged to all large commercial vehicles entering the city. This has to be definitely removed. We must be open for business. We can't be, this statement is ludicrous. It shouldn't even be in this resolution. And I apologize to Counsel Christian, but that's life. And that's fine.
Okay, so do we have anybody else that wants to speak to this? Counsel Butler.
Yes, I, it, if, if Counsel Christian's idea is to, to get some reaction from people, well, a couple of trucking firms said, we don't want tolls, that we're not paying for them, et cetera, et cetera. And told me why. And I said, I don't believe we're going there at all. And, but the report, hey, I don't think staff already has a pretty good idea of what, what's going to come forward. This is a way, to my way of thinking, getting the attention of the Ontario government. We've got more connecting links than everybody else in Northern Ontario, but we don't get monies for them. So it's an in-your-face way of getting attention, but let's try to get their attention. And let's, let's try to deal with the inequality of the financing of roadways. Thank you.
Anybody else on this? Counsel Fatah.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
It's your prerogative, you're right.
One question I have is, is for Mr. Elliott. I just want his professional opinion. Are we working on Black Road on the pretense that we'll never have a true bypass? Just from your point of view, are we, the work we're doing towards Trunk Road, on Black Road and so on, is that? Is there any basis on, on what we're doing that would reflect? Road, and so on, is that, is there any basis on what we're doing that would reflect on the fact that we're eventually going to have a bypass sometime in the next decade?
Mr Mayor, councillor Fata, Black Road has to be widened to at least four lanes, and given the fact that MTO has essentially postponed, or they've shelved any EA route planning for a bypass, then, yeah, we're proceeding, we're proceeding that way. We don't see any alternative other than to make it at least a four-lane road in the near future.
And just one, just one final question regarding, we're talking about large commercial vehicles, are we talking transports only? Because there was concern raised by a local contractor that we're going to start with a toll booth with, for every large, large commercial vehicle. Are we talking like strictly transports that travel? Maybe this question is to councillor Christian?
Sorry? Does staff have an answer for the question, Mr Elliott?
Mr Mayor, I think the question was, was the intention to have tolls for all commercial traffic, and that, that would be...
That would be councillor Christian's answer. Councillor Christian, you want to give councillor Fata some enlightenment on that? Notwithstanding the unjustified comments within this chamber, the goal, the goal is to look at, and it said, "transprovincial" traffic. Now, I've talked to experts in the area, theoretically, and I don't want to go down this road, but if you want to pursue this, theoretically, you can charge a truck that's travelling Sault Ste Marie a toll. It doesn't mean you charge somebody whose point of origin is Sault Ste Marie, or its destination is Sault Ste Marie. Talking about the trucks that are passing through, they're not stopping anywhere. If you want to grandstand and say that this is, you're curtailing business, we're not open for business, don't fool yourself. That's not what this is about. There's technology there, and I'm not saying we're going there, I'm simply asking for whether it's even legal. The MTO might say no. You could, you could set it up theoretically, if you want to follow the argument, that if you're a local truck, you don't pay the fee. If you're a local business who has a company coming in to deliver something, they don't pay a fee. They're not passing the cost on to the consumer. So, that's not what this is about. So read into it what you want, I'm making it clear right now what I'm intending, so spin it any way you want, that's what I'm saying. Okay, councillor Compaute, just be prepared, if you ask councillor Christian a question, you're going to get a really passionate response.
No, I got that.
And it is 7:37, so.
Thanks, Mayor Provenzano. I'm also going to speak against the resolution, and I'm also concerned about the economic impact to the municipality. But I also want to talk about, if in fact that a toll ever did go up, what I'd be worried about is that the, the trucks that try to divert around the toll to have to pay the cost, and where they're headed, and if they use the municipal roads that we have, what the impact would be on the maintenance for those trucks going over it to be able to take care of them. So there would be an economic impact towards the community, may not, might not be a good one.
Okay, so we have, I have councillor Hollingsworth, and then Romano.
Thank you, through mayor. Interesting motion, but, but the point that does draw me to, I'm not saying I'm supporting, but we do have a concern here. We have been told by our engineering department that they're not going to be expanding, MTO is not going to be expanding, we have evidence that this is a vital link to the highway system. So my question is this, and maybe our CAO might be able to answer this, or maybe, but there must be something that we can do to get the attention of the MTO without doing a toll. And in your past experience, have you come across different methods? There must be a couple of methods that we can use to rattle the chains, knock on the doors, MTO is saying, "This is vital."
Okay, so we'll have the CAO answer that question.
Thank you through you, Mr Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. As has been commented around the horseshoe, we've done advocacy work, we've done, we went out with delegations to, to the minister, there was actually a delegation, I think as little as about nine months ago, with councillor Shoemaker and the city engineer to MTO. We've had internally many discussions with the regional directors, with the ADMs, they're, at the end of the day, the province has their mechanisms through which they make allocations in terms of the connecting links funding, and we do everything we can to try and influence that, but it's ultimately the province's decisions to do that. In terms of tolling, again, tolls on any roadway is at the discretion of the Minister of Transportation, who may allow it, but they, it's again, Minister of Transportation that provides that decision. And that would be a part of any report if it is passed tonight that we would bring back.
Okay, so we have councillor Romano.
I'm not sure how to react to this. I, I really respect the, the nature of the resolution, I respect the goal of the resolution. I think supporting it may be tantamount to suicide in some respects, but I, I really do respect where it's coming from. I appreciate our CAO's earlier comment that a lot has been done and things have been done. I think, given the nature of the resolution, I would put this back to councillor Christian. Given your own comments, and I think the realization that there is no realistic desire to implement toll booths, at least I assume that from your comments, would you consider a friendly amendment just to remove the last paragraph of the resolution? And I really think that, and respect what it is you're trying to achieve through this, our funding, and I won't, I'm not going to stand on the soapbox all that long, but our funding has been cut and we're expected to pay for all of these connecting links, and we can afford it. And quite frankly, we are not in the same position of a lot of the other municipalities out there, and look at the effect it's having on us. Something does need to be done, and some, there needs to be a stronger lobbying effort. And while anecdotal or not, the resolution in its, in its present form, I don't think will have the teeth that you're after, even if we did pass it to the MTO and various other governmental, governmental agencies. But I think on a serious note, if we can look at maybe removing that, I think maybe we can try to do that lobbying again.
Okay, so just on that point, councillor Christian, councillor Butland, are you agreeable as the movers to delete the, the last paragraph in full? Further, the staff investigate the possibility of establishing tolls, that, that paragraph would be deleted in full? That's, that's perfectly fine, I thank you for the lively discussion. And I will investigate that on my own with the same intent that I don't think that we'll ever get to that point, but I'm always one to believe that information is power, and to find out some basic information about that, which other areas use. I don't think it hurts to have that in your back pocket, so I'm more than fine with removing that resolution, that, that last paragraph. Okay, so the resolution's amended to remove the last paragraph that relates to any reference to tolls. Recognizing that, do we have further discussion? Councillor Hoopin, go ahead, well, she hasn't spoken to this yet, so.
That's right, thank you.
Yeah, so councillor Hoopin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that a couple of years ago, we did attend the AMO conference, and we sat face-to-face with the Minister of Transport, and we did plead to him at that time, so I'm wondering if we do it again this year, or in 2017, we might get the message across. So, sitting face-to-face and...
But we have to recognize councillor Hoopin, that since we did meet with the Minister of Transportation, they have increased the connecting links funding. So we met with the minister two years ago, and they have increased it since then.
But we need more.
Yeah, sure, we can meet with the minister again, yeah.
Alright, thank you, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Okay. So, sir, what...
I'd like to just, please, I'm a suicide survivor, and I didn't care for a city councillor joking with the word "suicide," because I've lost some friends to suicide, so I'd like a formal apology, please, and thank you.
Sir, let, let me apologize to you as the mayor of the community and as the Chair of City Council for that. You have my sincerest apologies.
Okay, thank you very much, but I'd like an official apology from the city councillor.
Councillor Romano?
I deeply apologize for the comment, I was referring to it as a political sort of, and I won't even repeat the word, I do deeply apologize, there's, I could tell you, it has affected my personal family as well, there was absolutely no intent in any way meant in that fashion, it was meant in the spirit of the, the comments with respect to the resolution. I can assure you, and I'd be happy to sit down with you and chat and, and share my own experiences with you, and I assure you, it was not in any way meant in any reference to that, it was different discussion all in all, and as I indicated, it's obviously on my part a poor choice of words, I apologize.
I have to say, I just probably misinterpreted it from body language, I have difficulty reading body language, but I do appreciate both your apologies. Sorry to interrupt your meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you for your courage.
Thank you.
So, we're going to call this vote, so we have the motion as amended. All in favor of the motion carried?
Under Agenda Item 8.5, Pointe du Chene, Nakoma's Beach Water Concerns, a motion by councillor Romano and Nero, whereas recent media reports have advised the public that there were concerns over the presence of potentially harmful levels of benzene in the drinking water in the areas of Pointe du Chene and Nakoma's Beach, whereas remedial efforts have been undertaken, and said recent media reports have indicated that there are presently no safety concerns for residents in the Pointe du Chene and Nakoma's Beach areas with respect to potentially harmful benzene in the drinking water, and whereas residents of Pointe du Chene and Nakoma's Beach were notified, were not notified by the City of Sault Ste Marie, Alkoma Public Health, or any other agency of the concerns regarding potentially harmful benzene levels in the drinking water, the cause or origin of this contaminant, the effects of potentially harmful levels of benzene in the drinking water, the remedial efforts undertaken, any safety precautions or options to avoid the potentially harmful effects if in fact unsafe benzene levels were present in drinking water, or the specific results of recent testing of the water, including the nature of the testing and the specific results detected. And whereas there ought to be an agency accountable to the public to ensure that residents that could be affected by concerns such as those noted above are made known at the first available opportunity to ensure that residents can make informed decisions with respect to matters affecting their safety and wellbeing. Now therefore be it resolved that staff report to council as to the obligations of Alkoma Public Health, the City of Sault Ste Marie, and any other related agency to provide notice to ensure that the concerns noted above brought to the intent, attention of potentially concerned parties or residents at the first available opportunity. Which agency is or are to be held accountable for decisions such as these, and whether or not this matter has been dealt with according to the applicable provincial standards or regulations? I would point out that there's correspondence from Alkoma Public Health on your agenda.
Yeah, so councils have an opportunity to probably to review the correspondence from Alkoma Public Health at this point. Councillor Romano, it's your motion, I believe it's moved by councillor Compaute, or seconded by councillor Compaute?
Councillor Compaute had conflict on the matter, there was some confusion with respect to the issue, but councillor Nero had agreed to second for me, and I had sent an email to that effect, but...
Okay, if you could, you want to speak to your motion? Go ahead councillor Romano.
The start of this was an article that was reported recently in the media with respect to benzene in the water in the areas of Nakoma's and Pointe du Chene. Since that time, I've received a number of calls from constituents of mine, who also happen to be, to some extent, neighbors, as I do own a property in the area. I don't have a well, so I didn't feel that there was any type of a conflict with the issue in bringing the matter forward. The article and the calls led to some further investigation, and in speaking with a number of the individuals in the area, I learned that a letter had been sent in late October of this year to residents in the area, asking those residents to take part, if they wished, in a voluntary water testing program, and it noted that in 2008, there had been benzene noted in the water, and as a result of, or there were concerns of benzene in the water, I should say, and as a result of those concerns, there was water testing done then, and that if any individuals wanted to participate in this voluntary testing of their private wells, they, there was a process outlined as to how they could do that. In addition to that, there was a package contained, or a letter contained within the letter, that provided information to residents in that area as to the harmful effects or the concerns of benzene. A number of these concerns related to various different types of disorders or, or symptoms, I should say, that someone might suffer as a result of this, ultimately concluding that benzene was a carcinogen to humans, and that it could cause leukemia, as well as other types of cancers, other types of cancers. Seeing a letter like that in your mailbox, I think would cause anybody a great deal of concern. That letter, as I indicated, went out in late October of 2016. However, prior to that, a number of the residents in the area advised me that they could see drilling happening in the area across the street of where the other public wells were located. There seems to have clearly been, as we know from what's been reported and what's been produced through various meetings at the EPH Board, that there was some work going on in these areas, there's been connections to certain products, petrol products and such, that were being used for fire-related, for risk of a better word, risk aversion testing. The point of all of this now is this, to read about this as a community member and to furthermore receive a letter in the fall for something that was going on early in the summer and continued on from 2008, I think people would be very alarmed in the area, and there's no specific information that's gone out to the residents verifying what the results of the testing were, what the nature of the testing was, what the, the origin of the problem was, why these new wells were being dug, what was being tested, all of these types of things. You would expect that as a resident of the area, you would know what's going on with your own drinking water, especially to find out, you know, when you get this letter in October, that it's not saying that you have benzene in your water and you are going to get any of these symptoms or diseases as a result, but to have it contained in this fashion would cause anybody serious concern. Now, when we all ran in the last election, one of the primary issues facing the city at that time was water. Ward 1 in particular had a tremendous issue with respect to water, and obviously, we haven't had to deal with that issue in a great, significant way, because it's largely seems to have been resolved. Certainly, I'm sure some people will contact us after this and say, "Oh no, we still have issues," but the point of the matter is, that was a tremendous, tremendous issue in Sault Ste Marie back in 2014 and the preceding years. And when I remember that issue, I do recall that there were significant discussions had by, I won't say all of us, but certainly a lot of us in this room, dealing with the issues of water. And at that time, it was city water, it was on our, it was our responsibility as the city, and of course, PUC was largely involved in that. But one of the biggest factor that I am taking from that experience versus this, is that in that experience, we were dealing with taste and odor issues, we weren't dealing with safety issues for people's health. Now, of course, anybody wants to, nobody wants to drink a brown glass of water, so please, I don't want to minimize any of the concerns of those residents who suffered through that period. But there was nothing, at least at that time, reporting any actual safety, health hazards related. Now, we have this situation where we're dealing with the residents of Ward 6 are the ones who are suffering through this problem. We're not talking about city water, we're talking about well water, and we're not talking about taste and odor issues, we're talking about safety issues. So my question, and I'm asking for a staff report on this, is, first and foremost, shouldn't all of these residents that potentially could have been affected by this situation, which was obviously concerning enough, to go and invest in to drill in several additional wells, to doing all this testing on the wells, shouldn't the people have been advised before, and at the outset, "These are the potential hazards or concerns that you all may face"? Should they not have been told that? Should they not have been told why? What is the problem that is causing this? What is the potential problem that's causing this concern? Should they not after the fact be told what the results are of all the testing? Shouldn't they get specific statistical data advising them as to exactly what is going on with their water, if anything at all? I, I think it's imperative that we get some kind of a report... I, I, I think it's imperative that we get some kind of a report advising us as to whether all these things should be done, whether what was done meets provincial regulations, and really, quite frankly, at the end of the day, who this falls on. So tho- those would be my comments, uh, and that is why I'm asking for this report.
Do we have any other comments on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. So we're going to deal with the bylaws now?
Okay, under Agenda Item 11, I have a motion by Counselors Romano and Butland, resolved that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda under date December 12, 2016 be approved?
All in favor. Oh, sorry, sorry, Counselor Nero has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, Mr. Wade, I'm sorry I didn't get to you earlier on this. On Bylaw 2016 213, it's the, uh, Board Appointments Bylaw, changes we made in that. I have two questions. Number, the first question is, don't we normally do appointments at this meeting? But there's a committee that's doing it, but normally we would approve them at this meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. Prior to, uh, this year, you had done those appointments in closed session at the meeting in December. The appointments actually weren't formally approved until the first meeting in January. So that's when the appointments will be brought to you for formal approval. Uh, you'll be, the, um, nominating committee will be recommending a slate of citizen appointments to you at that meeting, and council will, uh, handle the council of member appointments to committees at that meeting.
Okay, that's good. My second question is, just the wording, and it, it may be the way I'm reading this. In the bylaw, I don't know if you have it up yet, but in the purpose?
I'm just pulling it up.
Yeah. It refers to the process by which council members and citizens are appointed to boards and committees, whether they be boards and committees of council, other boards and committees, or boards and committees. So are we saying now with that change that even committees of council have to go to the nominating committee?
Mr. Clarification, Counselor Nero, where exactly?
Uh, purpose, the purpose, under, under the bylaw itself.
Okay. On schedule, eh?
That's correct.
And now that I have it, Counselor Nero, could you please repeat your question?
Just the wording on it, and, and again, it may be the way I'm reading it, but does that, is it including that committees of council should go to the nominating committee as well? Where sometimes we'll do a committee of council, write an open, open council?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero, the intent of the change, the, the purpose was unchanged with the policy amendment that was approved to council. The, certainly the intent of, uh, the changes would be that the nominating committee would look at citizen members for committees, but any committee of council that, where we are talking about appointing council members to a committee? That would be done by council at an open council meeting, there'd be no, it wouldn't be going to the nominating committee.
Like I said, it was just the way I read that, that wording. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Myers, in the same bylaw?
Yes, um, if I can, probably through you to the clerk or the deputy clerk. I did have a conversation with the deputy clerk about this earlier, or last, I guess it was the end of last week, uh, around the fact that, um, I was wondering if we could get the list of the committees that council will go on prior to January, because they don't go to the nominating committee, but just to remind us what committees, and I believe the deputy clerk's got that in process.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. Council will be receiving shortly an email requesting them to identify which committees they wish to be considered for, uh, for the next term, and as part of that email, you will receive documentation as to which ones council has membership on and who is currently in those positions.
Thank you, and I think there was a question around terms on the, the one which affects six of us, the DSAB board, and I, I think we got clarification on that one, whether that one's up or not.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, uh, the, uh, confusion lay in the ruling in some of the DSAB bylaws, which refer to, uh, the council members having a four-year term. Uh, that is not the practice nor the pleasure of, uh, council at this time, and, uh, the practice is to appoint, uh, the members of the City of Sault Ste. Marie City Council for two-year terms to the DSAB.
That will be on the list. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, all in favor of the bylaws? That's carried. We're on other business. Uh, Mr. Brown, you wanted an opportunity to speak, so in speaking with the clerk, I think the process is, is that someone would have to move and, and second that. So do we have a mover to, uh, permit, permit Mr. Brown the opportunity to speak, and we need a second on that? Then we debate that motion. If that passes, then you, you can have your go at it. Do I have a mover? Counselor Shoemaker, do I have a second? Counselor Romano? All in favor of the motion? I, I, I think I saw, I wasn't quite sure, but I think I saw a majority of the hands there. Go ahead, Mr. Brown, you have five minutes to speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about an idea that we'll see the 2017 levy increase reduced from the 4.24% that you passed, and also eliminate all of the cuts that, um, that were passed at the council meeting. I want to begin by, um, having a, a good news story, and, and that's the work that's actually done right here in this council, and also, um, in this building by city staff. I, as a taxpayer, I really am, uh, you know, cognizant of the fact that originally the budget was 6.62%. Staffs said that that's what the percentage would have to be increased. And then when they came on December 5th, staff had cut almost a percent down to 5.63%, which represents significant work, and, and I really, uh, appreciate of, of that fact. And at that time, when they came at, with 5.63%, you could have easily, um, just said, okay, you know, this is what staff recommends, they've pared it back, they've done everything they can, you know? What can we offer here that, uh, you know, that is more than the experts that are in the field? But you didn't say that. You did the good and caring and hard thing that, uh, you know, I as a taxpayer appreciate because you said, no, you know, the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie, they're going to find it extremely unaffordable for a 5.63% increase. You know, we need to cut here. And so I, I don't feel that the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie recognize the fact that you people are very caring. You, you said, we have to cut to make it more affordable for our citizens. And so, um, another point that I'd like to make is that I am very cognizant of the fact, sitting through this meeting, that you're, you're extremely caring individuals. Despite the fact that, uh, the EDC and the Sault Ste. Marie Innovation Center, you know, they're in a very uncertain position right now. I heard a lot of caring emotion by you people to say that, you know, we have to make sure that these people feel comfortable, that they're at, you know, in this environment of uncertainty, that, uh, you know, we're going to take care of them, that they feel that way. So, you know, I don't think that's recognized by the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie, especially the taxpayers, who, you know, some people are affected by this cut and some people are affected by that cut. So it's in that light that I hope you are going to receive my comments. I'd like to, um, you know, in some emails, I have been terse with some city councilors. You know who you are, to the point of rudeness, and so I apologize for that. And so at this point, I'd like you to just sort of imagine that I'm your favorite person in the world, because that's the spirit in which I offer you this idea, um, to, um, you know, cut the taxes for the citizens, and also to, um, you know, decrease the levy so it makes life more affordable. So I'd like to begin by saying, by giving you suggestions.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, you're going to have to kind of, I know you're just beginning, but you're going to have to kind of get to the, the suggestion because you've eaten up a large part of your five minutes. None of my comments will come off it, but let's get to your suggestion.
Okay, well, I'd like to give you some examples. We all know elderly couples who, uh, you know, worked hard to have a big home for big families, and they keep their big homes. Uh, because, you know, their kids have moved away, and every year, a couple times a year, they come back, and they have celebrations. And so they're paying big taxes, just because they're proud, hardworking people who love their family. And there's also people who are sort of on the edges of our community who are just, who have chosen to live here. You know, people like young people who are paying rents that will be affected by, you know, income tax increases. And so it's for those people. Like I, I understand that you're trying to be fiscally prudent, and the idea is to have, uh, instead of having, I'll just be very succinct here, instead of having a, um, a $5 million debenture against the improvements for City Hall, you take out a $7.3 million debenture. Why an extra 2.3 million? Because that's the amount of money that goes into the asset management fund every single year until 2025. So you take that 2.3 million, and in this year of, um, you know, extraordinary circumstance where we got staff recommending a 5.63 budget, and you guys having to cut to the bone to cut down the tax rate, um, and where you're cutting bus service on Saturday because, you know, earlier in the year, because, you know, you're trying to make as much savings as possible, and where you're eliminating two weeks of free landfill access, you made those cuts, and you're promising next year to have, you know, service charges for everything? I mean, take the extra 2.3 million and debenture it against the City Hall improvements, which need to be done, they've been put off for like 10 years, and take that 2.3 million and give the citizens a break. Give them, you know, their fountain that they love, you know? Because these are really hard times. Half the city is unemployed. I heard some great news stories here tonight where, you know, we're getting new industry, Microsoft. And why are they coming here? It's because Sault Ste. Marie is close to, to nature, and that's where people want to be who work. And because it's 35% cheaper to operate in Sault Ste. Marie. I mean, I'm an optimist here. I'm thinking, you know, a couple of years down the road, we're going to be back in surplus. So the extra 2.3 million at that time, take the surplus, put it against the City Hall debenture. But in this year, an extraordinary year, take 2.3 million and eliminate the cuts so you can do the roadwork, you can keep the people employed, because the cuts, they don't just mean cuts to money, they mean cuts to people's lives. You heard that here tonight. They mean, like, when you talk about reducing seniors' programming at the, uh, senior center, that, you're talking about a couple of jobs. When you're talking about, uh, reducing summer student employment, you're talking about a reason for students to come home and stay connected to Sault Ste. Marie. When you're talking about, uh, you know, eliminating the fountain, I understand that there's going to be a resolution that provides private funds, but you're, you're affecting people's enjoyment of the waterfront, in a time when, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of, you know, that sort of thing. So that's my view.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Brown. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you. I have a, I have a, a resolution. It's a substantive resolution, and I don't think it can be addressed at this time. It's a reconsideration resolution.
Why don't you, why don't you forward that to, to city councilors? Because you're right, it would be too substantive to canvass at this time. Mr. Brown, you know the rules very well, but you can forward that resolution around to the city councilors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The motion by Counselors Campodich and Christian, resolved at this council now adjourned.
All in favor. Carried.